I'll call this meeting to order at 5:44. Can everyone hear me?
No.
Call the meeting to order at 5:44. We'll read the resolution you have been resolved at the meeting we called order and the agenda for the meeting we adopted as certainly. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Counselor Breschek moves. Can I have a second there? Counselor, second it. Any comments, questions? Counsel, however.
As I know, this will probably be a long one. I wonder if there's any amendments or two of them. A group first.
It's not critical, no. Okay, can I have a call in order? Call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So just go over something like we did last time. Is that...
Mr. Mayor, just, I have an addendum I'd like to add.
Oh, yes, okay.
I'd like to make, I'd like to add an addendum to discuss advertising and recruitment of a C O to fill the vacancy. This is a serious matter that must be addressed immediately. I move that this item be added to the agenda for today for discussion. Can I have a second there?
I'll second it.
Counselor, second it. Can I have any discussion?
I don't think it's appropriate at this time. You already called a meeting in this regard. We don't need to be discussing that at this meeting. We need to fully concentrate.
I don't think it's appropriate at this time to add it to the agenda. I don't think we're going to get to it anyways because of the lengthy public hearing we had previously and how we currently have on the agenda. It's a new point. We're having a special meeting for this to discuss this. So, and I would like that also in camera. That's something I want to discuss in public.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Mayor. Just to reply to that, most of these items, I think, will go fairly quickly after the public hearing. I do believe we are also going to set a time limit tonight on people speaking for or against besides the presenters. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, but I think this is the perfect avenue to add it to the agenda. There's people here that would like to know what's going on in the R M. So I think it's something that's important in the essence of time to get added.
You have comments? Okay, can I call for a question?
On the matter of, for Counsel Campbell's motion regarding putting the addendum item to add the C O recruitment, I'm open to the idea of that. I do, I know that we do have a meeting that's been proposed by the mayor already for next week, but if we do have time to deal with that, then I'd like to hear a bit more from the mover of the motion and even the second here, why we should be putting that on the
Counselor Pacheco, thank you. So what I, the reason I think we should add it is, you know, I do believe we will have time tonight. There's only so much time to have meetings that all five of us can get to in person. And this is something that is very important to the R M. As we know, the current C O is here until February 19th. So we're already 30 days away, basically, till the C O is gone. And my idea would be to recommend a recruitment firm to do it. And I think this is something, if we get this passed today, that we could get on to as soon as tomorrow instead of waiting for a later date and us losing more time and not having things looked after in the R M.
Thank you very much, Counsel Campbell, for that. Based on what you're saying, and I mean, I'm looking at the meeting for next week. I'm actually going to be out of town, so I'd have to be zooming in on that meeting. So if you're moving that we have a meeting tonight, I'm open to it. I'd support it. If there is time, I'd sort of be in favor of discussing the matter. The sooner the better.
Mayor Trujin, I'd like to ask Counsel Campbell who's discussed this with ahead of Myself. So your wisdom is to discuss this openly in front of an entire crowd. The recruitment and advertisement for our C O, do you think that's appropriate? I don't think it's appropriate. I think this is an in-camera item that should be discussed by counsel. We have a meeting next Tuesday. We tried to call a meeting this week. You couldn't attend for some reason, but there has been a meeting called for this. I don't see the rush. We, on our, excuse me, on our agenda for next week, we're asking to make a decision about the C O position already. So I don't see why we're jumping the gun here or why you suddenly have decided for yourself that we should make this adjustment. I don't agree with this adjustment. This needs to be something that we follow the agenda, we follow the meetings that our mayor has put together, and it should be private. This should not be something that comes out here in public. If you want to do it, you should be done in camera. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a discussion I want to have in front of all these people.
Is it all transparency? Or privacy?
I don't think we're going to be talking anything that's privileged and open to transparency. There's people sitting in the room to hear this. I think it's, we're supposed to be putting this out there, and if we're deciding that we are going with a third party to come in and headhunt, I guess, for another C O, jumping on that sooner than later would be better so that our administration staff would be ready for our next meeting. So I don't think we're sitting here trying to make details. We're just trying to set the stage for the next meeting so we're not walking in starting from the beginning.
I work for the residents of West St. Paul, and I have nothing to hide, having the open discussion with the residents here. So that's, I think that's a very key thing. I don't want anything to hide. All I'd say now, Mr. Mayor, is I'd say call for the question, please.
Mr. Campbell, I work for the residents as well, but there's also a thing called privacy. Somebody yelled out, "What about the transparency?" There is transparency, but there's also a thing called privacy, and the C O also has a right to privacy. Mr. Campbell, you had a conversation with the C O as I walked in here today. Seems to me that there was a discussion about this. That's fine. We had a discussion about it, but I really feel that if you're going to do, have a discussion about the C O contract, about how you're going to replace the C O, then it should be done in private. You don't want to discuss things that we could be sued for. So you always put something in camera that has personnel, and we've always done that. You've also always put a personnel issue in camera. So if this is going to be discussed and you all want to vote for that, then I request that we put in camera for discussion as it's a personnel issue.
Just on the point of the transparency, I, you know, I definitely want to see more transparency, the mayor around transparency for this council. If there are matters that are for in camera that are of an H R matter and legal matter, certainly we can go in camera, but for, I think, talking with the tactics and some of the tactics in terms of recruitment and some of our next steps, we can certainly discuss that. So again, I'd say, now that I've had a little bit of a chance to think about it, I would be in favor of the motion.
I would just call for the question.
I guess, just to clear it up, is that even though we have this discussion this evening, that special meeting that we had scheduled for Tuesday will still be going on, there will still be weeks to be some other discussions. As long as everyone knows that and understands that, that is all right. So all in favor of...
Aye.
All opposed? Carry it.
Mayor Trujin, on a special meeting, any addendums to the agenda under procedure by law have to be unanimous. Is transparency...
Well, I'm not sure.
That's correct. Yeah.
Correct, but it's been defeated.
Point of order is under a special meeting, which this is, and yet additions to the addenda, addenda must be unanimous. This is not unanimous, so it is not carried.
Okay, the motion has been defeated.
Very transparent.
The meeting is, there is a meeting scheduled for Tuesday. You're all welcome to attend to that meeting also. So it's not that, we're not being transparent because right now we want to focus on this, what's on the agenda right now, and we just want to move that forward. Okay, so I just want to comment here that we have many people here who have taken the time to come out and have registered to speak, and it's our goal to be here front beat and everyone of you tonight. I'd ask that each person be as concise as possible in their comments and restrict their comments only to the application before us. If your position or information that you want to share with council is the same as other speakers who have spoken before you, you can indicate this in identifying the key points of your agreement. Last week, we asked that, we want you to be respectful. We want, sorry, last week, we want to be, provide a respectful setting for all who recently heard here tonight regardless of the position on the matter. Interruptions? Hello? Interruptions, heckling, applause, signs of fine cards, or any kind of disruptive or intimidating behavior will not be accepted. Anyone who behaves in this manner will be asked to leave the council chambers. I would also, just keep coming out. I would also request that they remain from side conversations as they can be rejected to the proceedings, especially with so many people here this evening. Trees refer to enter a meg at council chambers as need be, but trees do so quietly as possible. So we'll, we will now reconvene with public hearing amendment by law 2022 or 9P due result at this meeting of council resi... recessed. Dear resolve, this meeting of council recessed for the purpose of holding a public meeting pursuant to such section of the... All in our motion?
I'll move it.
Counselor Pacheco, who's the first? Counselor Breschek. Counselor Breschek seconds it. Any comments? None? Can I call for the question?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor? Okay. All opposed? None. Derek, do you want to sneak towards us?
Sure. I believe you wanted me just to go through a refresher of where we left off last week because I think we probably have some more people that are here today that weren't here last week, so I'll just give a bit of an overview. So tonight we have a public hearing that's really just for two, two applications, two related applications, but, but dealing with them separately. First, we're dealing with the rezoning application, which the purpose of that is, the applicant is proposing to rezone the property to a R C comprehensive residential zone, and that will be followed by another public hearing dealing with subdivision of the subject property to establish new roadways in 21 blocks of land. Not individual, single-family dwelling lots, but just large blocks of land that'll have to come back in the future for further subdivision. My colleague, Femi Ojo, to my right, will be going over those details when we get to that point. So right now, as you noted, we're just continuing on where we left off from last week with finishing off the rezoning, and like I said, then we'll be moving into the subdivision application. In terms of process or the order of the presenters or steps that you have at your public hearings, your typical process has been to open the public hearing. Our staff will present the application, giving an outline of what it's all about. You invite the applicant up to make a presentation. You call for people who are in support, people who are then in opposition, people who are then just here for information. And then finally, you ask the applicant back up to provide a rebuttal or to answer any questions that may have been raised through the public hearing. And then your typical process as well is to close the public hearing, and then you have a discussion amongst council and make a decision. On the screen, you can see we've already gone through most of that public hearing. We're starting back up where we left off where the applicant is finishing off their rebuttal or answering any questions, I think is where we left off with council. Council's about to ask them some questions, and then you'll go to closing that hearing and making a decision. After that, as I noted, we'll be going to the public hearing for the subdivision application. We'll go back through the whole process. You'll reopen a new public hearing for that item. The community planner will give an outline of what the application's all about, and then you'll invite the members of the public up to, to give their input to council. So just a reminder to council, and I guess as a bit of a Coles notes for everyone that's in the audience, especially those who are new to the public hearing tonight. With that, I will pass it back over to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
So I guess we can have, does the presenter, the applicant, does the applicant want to do a rebuttal?
I believe last week we provided our answers to... Is it where you're prepping them? I believe last week we provided our rebuttal to the questions that were brought up by the community. And we were at a stage where we had some final questions that needed to come to the council, and there was a lot of conservatives from the gallery at the edge, so it was difficult to answer any of the final questions. So if there are any questions, we can ask.
Does counsel have any questions to ask? Counselor Pacheco?
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Wilkie. Can you just readdress for me the access to the proposed development off of Highway number nine and also your proposed closing of the interior street to the existing neighborhood? Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Just, just as a point in case I wasn't clear, right now we're still doing the zoning by law amendment application where the question before council is, is it appropriate to rezone this property to the R C zone? After this application, you'll be dealing with the subdivision application, which is about establishing those new roadways, questions about roadways and access. That's probably more appropriate at that stage.
Counselor Pacheco?
It doesn't work. We're waiting for batteries.
I'll speak loudly so you can hear me. Can you hear me now? Okay, to the planner, I've asked a question. Is it appropriate to ask about municipal water at this point, or should I be asking that at the subdivision stage?
It's absolutely appropriate at the subdivision stage. At this point, the question is, can this land be developed? Is it appropriate to rezone? Probably questions around servicing would be appropriate.
Questions around...
Servicing. Water. Yeah, water, sewer.
Would you prefer we ask this?
I think so.
And when we get the mic back, we'll ask.
Okay. Hi, Ms. Wilkie, how are you today? Welcome. My question for you is, your development proposes municipal water, is that correct?
Correct.
How many E R units do you currently hold or does the developer hold?
I would need to confirm developer on what they were holding areas. Right now, the intent is to bring the water line up to this area in the expectation of being able to develop, which is why we're not showing the number of lots yet for the number of units that they're putting in. That is something that is in discussions with the developer.
So you have no E R units at the moment, is that correct?
Yeah. They're, they're part of the development agreement is when they're able to...
I'm sorry, can you...
We do not pull... At the moment, help within his hands, there may be, there is potential for it. There is not necessarily...
Okay, so that's, that would be, there's potential, but there's currently no water limits, right?
Correct.
Okay. And have you done any homework as far as, you wanted, you mentioned you wanted to put a pipe down Main Street, which would have to be on the east side because the wastewater is on the west side, correct?
Correct.
And have you gone to the cemetery that you're going to put the pipe by and ask for any easement or ask for any rights?
That will all be part of the development agreement, that is not part of the rezoning.
So you haven't gone to any...
It's not required at this time.
It's not required. But is it required to have the workers, usually before you develop?
To be able to develop the lots, yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Any more questions from counsel? None? Do you have any more comments? Okay, so then... So then we will now, we're closed the public hearing. Due resolve that council, be hereby closed the public hearing and resume the regular meeting of council. All those, and I have a person in motion, Counselor Pacheco motions. Can I have a second there? Counselor Breschek, you seconds. Any comments, questions? Can I call for a question? All in favor? All opposed? Carry it. So we'll have a second, we'll go on to our second reading here. Before I start the second reading, I just want to run forward that if there is anyone that has any conflict of interest, that they should recuse themselves just to give it some thought. Also, I would like to see a recorded vote, please. Any? Yes. Sorry, just by the way. Okay. Be resolved that, be resolved that by law 2022 dash 09P, the, being a bylaw of the Roman, it's called a West St. Paul to his own unaddressed properties located on Main Street identified as roll 229022, 209300, 229350, from A 90, agricultural zone to R C comprehensive residential zones be read as for a second time. All those in the... Discussion now, please. Any discussions?
Okay, I'm going to ask a question of our planner. Under the development, a development for secondary plan for the West St. Paul, more secondary plan referred to, this area is a small lot, is that correct? Or can it be done on wells?
This area, like you know, is designated as residential smaller, and the development kind of fits what's being proposed.
Okay. So I have a couple of issues. One of them being that there are no E R units here for this developer. I recall on two open houses, very specifically, that the developer was told by the mayor, former mayor Christian, and by our C O that there is no water here and nothing can be developed for the next four years. That requires municipal water, there's no pipe, there's no water, and there are no E R units available. My concern is that if you approve a zoning, we have another developer who's been waiting for water, who's not been able to build because he has no water units either, and we've prevented him from building. Now, is it our due diligence to approve a zoning when the developer has admitted they have no water units? Are we backing ourselves into a corner here? And that's my concern. It's almost like we have a little bit of a cart before the horse. While I'm not necessarily opposed to... Okay, so I'm, I don't know what's going on here. I'm not necessarily opposed to Mr. Barra developing here at all, but there seems to be things that are missing before... Thank you. I think there's things missing in this application. One of them being the connection to P T H number nine has not been approved. Another is that we received a letter from Manitoba Archaeology, H R B, on the 13th saying they are opposed because this is a, there was a smaller, the reports from 2006 that was given, it was only a small cross-section of the area, so I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the water, lack of water. So I would like to see these things, the ducks all lined up before we go ahead and approve something when we don't have services to give this gentleman. And that's, that's just being, doing our due diligence, in my opinion. I know counsel, there are some council members that won't agree with me, and that's okay. But that is my concern, those are my concerns with this development.
I think as long as you hold it up, hold it together, I think it's fine. I just had a couple of comments to Counsel Pacheco's question, our comments here regarding the water. We have a new cell approved in West St. Paul. We have a new cell that's been approved. Please, I didn't, I didn't let you speak, I didn't jump in here, so. We have a new cell approved for West St. Paul, which is going to be built next year. This isn't a development that will start in the next two weeks. There's a lot of planning that's going to be involved in getting this started if it does pass. You keep, or I'm not going to say you, but it keeps coming up, the connection to Highway nine. The only comment that I saw, unless I missed it, if you could please clarify, the only comment that M I asked is that it line up with Parks Creek. They didn't say they're not allowing a connection to Main Street, they just asked that it align with Parks Creek. So if you could please clarify where there's no connection to Main Street. Regarding the water, we have a new cell approved in West St. Paul. We have a new cell that's been approved. Please, I didn't, I didn't let you speak, I didn't jump in here, so. We have a new cell approved for West St. Paul, which is gonna be built next year. This isn't a development that will start in the next two weeks, there's a lot of planning that's gonna be involved in getting this started if it does pass. You keep, or I'm not gonna say you, but it keeps coming up, the connection to Highway Nine. The only comment that I saw, unless I missed it, if you could please clarify, the only comment that MI asked is that it line up with Park's Creek. They didn't say they're not allowing a connection to Main Street, they just asked that it align with Park's Creek. So if you could please clarify where there's no connection to Main Street, because it was brought up this meeting, and it was brought up last meeting, and it rises up a lot of, put a lot of eyebrows out of whack here, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bichetti. There were three things that MI objected to. One of them was that it would be in conjunction with Park's Creek, we haven't had any verification of that. When I asked the planner, he said that it had not been done, or it's not approved yet. So that's the first issue. The second is, although a cell has been approved, that cell was designated according to the administration report from July the 7th, which I have here, that this is going to be devoted to commercial and firefighting. So that's why I think, it says, okay, for project managed reservoir pop house, and it's for increased capacity for fire protection throughout the community, which is critical to business and residential properties, and expansion of it in regards to commercial and retail development. So also in the traffic impact study that I read through, it very clearly states that construction will start in 2023. So construction is starting? No, it's on this application. Well, you let, you let him talk about it, so it's a traffic study, it has to do with roads.
No, I wasn't speaking of the traffic study, I was speaking of the report on this application.
Okay, well, all right, I've said that, please, thank you.
Here. I was gonna speak, but excuse not to. No, it's okay, hey.
You want to speak?
No, I'm good, thank you.
So I guess I'll just make a comment here. I have a question also for the planner. So according to the North Secondary Plan, it talks about that all future land use in general development areas be limited to ensure compatibility with existing land use. Any new developments that shall occur in such an manner, sort of journey lines, uses are compatible and potential conflicts between uses be minimized. The land uses in this area right now are all RC, RG, or larger. If you look across the highway, there's 1.5 acre lots, if you look down Jackman Road, there's 1.3 acre lots. Next to it is the river, is the River Edge Development, which is RG, which means that's a large lot size. This land used as being developed right now is RC, which means that it's gonna be more, a smaller size, so I'm not sure how that is compatible with the rest of the land used areas. And the other thing that comes up in here in the North Development Secondary Plan is that no new zoning for development will be permitted within the general development areas until secondary plans, plans for improved municipal infrastructure and services, including sewer and/or water be prepared. So I have not seen any plans for water and sewer be prepared for this area. I know there's a sewer line going towards the, going towards Sinamis, but that is for Sinamis, so that's what we would have to probably look to see what it is. And also because of this subdivision, it will have an impact on the roads in around that division. Going down Miller Road, Miller Road is a through street, so traffic through flow would be greater through that area.
I think you just have to hold the bottom part up.
So I think I just need to make sure that before this development goes through that, we have an assessment of how, what capacity of Miller Road would be. And I guess what also I've noticed is, is that... When I, I came out, and I guess I'm just gonna have to speak to the residents of River Edge, is that there was a lot of people that came forward the last time around, that they were not residents of River Edge, some of them...
Go in front. Mr. CEO, go around the front, maybe bring the mic in, then it might reach. No?
Okay, I'll try. So there was a lot of people that were, that were proposing this development, but I noticed that a lot of them didn't live in the area. And, you know, I, I might remember one resident came up from River's Edge, and they said, you know, like, she thought that she should be more voted, because she lived in the area. And I thought about that, and she said that. I think that we need to consider the residents of our area first, of what they want, as opposed to someone that comes from outside of the area or anybody, because they're not living in that area, they're not dealing with it. And I guess for these reasons, I oppose this development. And what I did hear from residents also is that they, a lot of the ones that were looking for information, they probably were more opposed to it than what they were for it. And all what they were saying when they were for it was, is that they wanna see development, but they didn't wanna see that type of development, they wanted to see a development that was proven diverse, which is RG development, this is what they would like to see. Thank you very much. So I call for...
Mr. Mayor, I'm just gonna grab the mic for a quick...
Everybody, last time I saw lots of residents of River's Edge that were in favor of the development, until comments were made by certain people about the road being a throughfare, and that MI wasn't allowing a connection on the Main Street, which, you know, just so that everybody does know, that's completely false. No, I said, I listened to residents of River's Edge last time, right? We had lots of residents come up, and lots of them were there for information, and then lots of them were in favor of it, until people made statements that MI would not allow a connection on the, uh, to Main Street, sorry, and that the throughfare from the current River's Edge would go through to the other property. So that's, you know, I, I saw that last meeting, and I just wanna make sure people are clear on that, that there is definitely an in and out from the new development, and it wouldn't be connected to the old development unless council decided that, which, you know, I know residents don't want that. Okay, quiet. And, you know, just, just another thing, us as councillors up here are not supposed to be, pre-determining what our goal is, the total goal is up, so, thank you.
Okay, so... Okay, so on the, the resolution that Mr. Mayor has tabled, or put on the floor for discussion and vote, we're here, we're here to talk about the rezoning of this, of this parcel, it's 21 parcels from A80 to RC, Residential Comprehensive. I think that the developer's done a lot of work with regards to working with the secondary plan. Secondary Plan, North Secondary Plan for, for West St. Paul is a document that helps guide future development, so that there is orderly planned development in West St. Paul. That's something that's super important. And for this developer to work within the spirit and intent of the secondary plan, I think is, is something to be commended. Also, reading the planner's report, the planning, the River Planning District is recommending approval on this. As well, the developer has done a lot of work with regards to ensuring that there's been a study regarding the cultural heritage of the area. Developer's also done a traffic study and met with various departments of government to ensure that this rezoning is in order, the rezoning application is in order. We have a bit of a sneak peek in terms of the subdivision, I know I can't talk about the subdivision, but just from that sneak peek, it looks something that could be exciting for West St. Paul. This, this particular rezoning is in line with the secondary plan, it's in line with what the River Planning District is talking about in their planning report. And, you know, West St. Paul's one of the fastest growing municipalities in Manitoba, and certainly the capital region of Manitoba. I campaigned on, on larger lots, this area is, you know, is, they're not small lots, it does say small lots, but they're bigger than, certainly bigger than city lots within the city Winnipeg, and it still has a rural feel. I think, again, on the rezoning, it's had a bit of a sneak peek from the developer, and I think it's a work for me to bring up that, you know, looking forward that the developer did some work with regards to trails within the neighborhood, talking also about the future of parks and play spaces. So he's creating a sense of community, and also listening to the residents with respect to closing off, I can't remember the street. River's Edge, so closing off River's Edge to the existing neighborhood to the south. So I think that there's been a lot of, a lot of collaboration, a lot of, you know, involving the residents and taking the residents' suggestions to heart and including them in these applications. So there's still a lot more that has to be done. Moving forward, I would certainly like to see things with respect to landscape come back to this council for approval. I'd like to see things with regards to the subdivision, the lot sizes come back for approval, and, you know, be constant contact with this developer, because I think what they're proposing is, is something that's gonna be beneficial for, for West St. Paul. So I'd certainly be in favor of the rezoning from A80 to RC at this time, and those are my comments.
So, thank you, Mr. Councilor Backdown. I guess since you stated whether you're for it or against it, and the mayor stated for or against, I'll state mine, which is I'm against it. And I'm against it because there is just no due diligence as far as waters concerned here, there's no water units. We have a report on the reservoir, it was supposed to be tendered by October 31st, and for certain reasons, it wasn't done, we still haven't tendered it. And I, and I just think it's the cart before the horse, we're moving too quickly on something and approving something when we don't have all the things that need to go into this zoning and into this development. Having said that, Mr. Barr, I think that you have some nice elements in this conceptual lot. There's some nice elements of the playground and soccer field, and those are nice elements. I'm gonna ask you, please think about these people that are living on Mayor's Trail, who want to hear of their lots, it's a very important thing for them. And I know that sometimes it throws a little bit of a wrench into your plans, but it's very important to them. As far as the PTH nine goes, it's supposed to be in line with Park's Creek, so that still has to be established, and I think that some of this conceptual might be moving around anyways, because I don't know if you're, and I'll ask the planner, if, is, is the line that he has indicated as far as having into the development, is it in line with Park's Creek right now?
Correct.
So it is in line with Park's Creek. So he should be getting, the other comment from, he should be getting access, I want one to another, I guess.
Definitely.
And so I guess the question is, on one of the conditions, it was, it, they indicated on this application that there has to be a north exit.
Yes.
Now, where would the, when we're talking north, that's towards Sinamis, let's just for clarification, right?
Yeah, that's correct, too.
Right.
So... Sorry, excuse me, the applicant is joined.
You wanna come and talk about that? And the reason I'm asking that question is there should be no connection to River's Edge, because it's south, you know?
The secondary plan actually talks about the fact that the River's Edge needs to go through the applicant's subdivision, and the applicant's land is connecting to PTH nine. So, and, yeah, what's called. MIT is also requesting that the subdivision should connect to the northern property that we just have shown on the subdivision. So those are the things that the MIT is asking, which is consistent with the, the secondary plan.
Okay, so what you're saying is the River's Edge can be closed, and a northern, could a northern road be put in just per MI instructions?
I think that's a, that's discussion for the next application.
Okay, that's a discussion for the next application, because we were talking about MI connection. Okay, thank you very much. And I'm also against his application.
So should we just all speak on it, just give what we think?
Do you wanna vote on this now? It's up to you.
Or should we just go on and make comments, like we're all just admitting, saying what we wanna do? Sorry.
I guess, Councilor... Councilor Bichetti, you wanna say something?
No, I'm ready to go to the vote, we're going, we're going around in circles saying what we want, just to say what we wanna vote on, but let's just get to the vote then, and go from there, I think we've said it all.
Okay, so we'll vote, just one last comment, just that I appreciate what all the councillors said, and I will ask them just to consider what residents of West St. Paul would like, and get their interest in land, and solidly, thank you very much. Yep, I call. Okay, we call, call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
You don't have a mover. You don't move her?
Could I have a mover first, please?
I'll move the mo, I'll move the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Councilor Backdown moves, Councilor Bichetti seconds it. Can I call for a question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I, Carrie. Lainey, can we do third reading with objections?
False reading.
No, we need a third reading for this one. Yeah, you can, you can do third reading for this application, because you haven't met the magic threshold of 25 people and, and registered an objection.
So we'll go, we'll go... Look, yeah, we'll go to third reading. We have resolved that by law 2023-09P, the, the inner bylaw of the Roman Spallet of Western Paul to rezone unaddressed properties located on Main Street identified as Rolls 2290200, 229300, and 229350, from A80, Agricultural Zone to RC, Comprehensive Residential Zone. Be read a third and final time, signed, sealed, and therefore passed as a bylaw of the Roman Spallet of Western Paul. Could I have a mover, please?
I'll move that, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Backdown moves, Councilor Bichetti seconds it.
It's recorded on third reading. I guess there's an opportunity for discussion, I would just like to ask the panelists, we didn't get to here, and we didn't fully document those people that wrote in, so could you go through the people that have written in for or against on this application? The letters that you've sent to us for and against this application on January 12th, you didn't know who they were and whether they were for or against. You didn't read out the letters, the names. You read out the list.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Want to pass her back to Mike?
You, you want me to read out all the names? Yes.
Yes, please.
Just to inform people of the hearing, I'm sure you should, so, can't do that. The hearing is closed.
Just the letters?
Hold, hold, just hold on a minute, just wait.
MLO on Mr. Planner?
Are we not supposed to read for this?
You, you cannot be wished, they, they would be registered as against for information of...
I'm not sure you can do that right now because you've closed the public hearing now, or it closes to providing more representation, but they were provided on the record for counterreading.
Yeah, we're doing third reading.
So that would be provided on the record?
It's all, it's all part of, the letters that were, were all provided for you, and they would show up, I'm assuming, in your meeting minutes?
In our package.
They'll be in the meeting minutes, on the record.
Okay, thank you. So those, those letters that we received, the names and for or against will be in our meeting minutes. I just want to make sure that we had that in there. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else, anyone else have any comments? Any objections that they want to record?
It's automatic.
Okay, let's call for the, all in, let's call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Carrie. What's, what's Carrie? So next on the agenda, I, you want to do that one?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, did you want to just take a, a brief reprieve from this application? Here's another one that we have for rezoning for first reading, just to get it on the books, so to speak, so we can...
Okay.
Yep. Sure, I'll ask my, I'll ask my colleague to make a, just a, an overview presentation on, on that other application.
Chair, you're not?
So...
Sorry?
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, as you've instructed, we're going to just take a, a brief detour here, and we're going to go down to item 5.2, or sorry, 6.1, which is first reading of a different zoning by law. Mr. Ojo is just going to give council a bit of an overview of that application.
Good evening, council members. The rezoning application is going to be submitted at 6:30, 6:38, part of the two Grasmer Road, road number 37300, 34700, 37500. The proposal is to rezonate subject lands from A-80 and Perforant Zone to RS Southeast Residential Zone. What you're looking at is what is called is the summary table of the bulk regulation in the RS zoning district. It shows the setbacks, the building height, the lot area and the lot width requirements in that municipal zone. This is the location map that shows the subject site and the surrounding contest. And this is the current zoning mark that shows the, the boundaries of the subject site and the area that is being rezoned currently. So the area that is being rezoned currently is Zone A-80, and the applicant is proposing to rezoning to RS, which is compatible with their, the address and lots. And this is the zoning by law on the main plan as submitted by the applicant. Background analysis, the applicant is proposing to rezonate subject property from A-80 and Perforant Zone to RS Southeast Residential Zone to facilitate the start of A-80 Southeast Residential Loss. The subject land is currently a SC Settlement Center where residential developments are mostly encouraged, which is an associated zoning application, S22295, the zoning application. Generally, the zoning proposal is consistent with the Settlement Center policies of the regular planning system of the main plan. However, more research and analysis is required before the applicant can recommend thinking this specific proposal should be approved or not. Thus, we recommend a faulty beginning of the bylaw, allowing public hearing to be guided, and our office to conduct further research, including referring that to commenting against. That concludes my presentation, thank you.
Just before you proceed, I just wanted to make sure the public is aware of what's going on here, because most of the people here are here for the subdivision rezoning and subdivision for Mr. Barrow's land, and just want, and what's happening here now is because we know that application is going to take a little while, the planning is, the planning, River Planning is saying let's jump to another item on the agenda, which they know, what they feel is not going to take too long, so that's, that's what's coming up on the board right now.
Nope, nope, no one speaks at this time. It's just first reading.
Yeah, first reading.
Being resolved by law 2022-13P, the, you know, by law of the Royal Municipality of West St. Paul to rezonate a portion of the properties identified as 572, 630, and 638 Grasmer Road, which lies south of Grasmer Drain, from A-80, A-80 as a cultural zone to RS, a service residential zone, to be read, to be read the first time.
I'll move that, I'll move that, Mr. Mayor.
My second.
Councilbacked Cannon moves it, Councilperson Shetty moves it. Oh, seconded. Any, any discussions, questions? Councilperson Shetty?
To our CEO or anyone at our, the office, is this the property that is subject to... No. Just wondering to our, and if this is the property that's subject to rezoning on the sale, does this have anything to do with that before we create, get a park created on the north side of Grasmer, or the pedestrian road department?
This is first reading, so this is to get it so it's circulated to, this is to get this application so it's circulated to all the provincial agencies? Did you want, did you want the mic to stay on? I just have a question to the planner. We're showing lots on sizes on here, are they going to be, they're going to be combined hearing with subdivision and zoning coming forward? Or would it be separate as it is in, in these two hearings?
That, that could be the will of council, however you want to set it up on your agenda, if you want to have them separately, that's fine. If you want to do a combined hearing, we can, we can do that as well.
Is there a subdivision application in process currently?
Yep.
Okay. So I guess we'll depend on the council, I would prefer to have these two together so we know what we're talking about when we get to talk about it. Is everybody in favor of that?
All in favor, Carrie, good night. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Non-Carry.
Mr. Mayor, just so you know, I got this mic, as long as you hold the battery up.
Yes, okay. So we're going to take a five-minute recess, just to rearrange the tables so that we have a mic, so, and then we'll start off with the, the hearing of the next, the second part of the hearing.
Got it.
Here is, it is resolved at this meeting of council, resets for the purpose of holding the public hearing pursuant to section 125.2 of the planning act. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move that, Mr. Mayor.
Councilbacked Cannon moves it, Councilperson Campbell seconded.
I can't hear what you're saying there, you're very muffled.
I will, how's that? Better?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a problem. So I guess now we'll, call, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carrie? Can I ask the planner to present the RDA report?
Good evening, council members again and audience. The subdivision application that you're looking at is on a best parcel on the street, road number 229200, 229300, 229350. The intent is to subdivide the subject property to create in one lots proposed, our blocks of various sizes between 0.43 acres to 50.43 acres within the proposed RC as comprehensive residential zone. This proposal will also create a scenario network system. This is the subject site that shows the site itself and the surrounding contest. And there, just like I said before, the subject site falls within the West St. Paul nonsecondary plan, and this is the land use plan, and it's designated residential small area. This is the West St. Paul secondary plan transportation network plan. I zoomed in a little bit for, for you to see. It shows that the applicant's site has to connect to Main Street at the Park Street Drive, and it shows that that's a connecting north, other part in St. Andrews, and that the River River Drive has to connect to the subject property, and there, that's the secondary plan. So this is the submitted application map as, as presented or opinioned by the applicant. It shows the, the blocks and the road they have. Like I said, the applicant is proposing RC residential lots, is proposing a...
We're getting you this mic.
The applicant is proposing 21 lots in the RC zoning district. The minimum lot area is 80 square feet, and the minimum lot area is 60. The applicant is proposing 21, and all of them is, is zoning by law RC lot area and lot width requirements. Our review analysis, the subject site is designated as general development under the RPA development plan, and residential small area and the West St. Paul nonsecondary plan. The subject proposal is compatible with the same subdivision we have south of the subject property. The subject proposal, in a way, is a continuation of the existing smaller development pattern for the south. Applicant has submitted a traffic investigation and a heritage resource assessment. These two studies are forwarded to the appropriate regional agencies. The heritage resource branch further noted that the applicant who worked used to be, more adult who worked used to be gone, and the submitted assessment report is interelimination. As far as the submitted sound, the proposal aligns with the RPA development plan, the West St. Paul nonsecondary plan, and this is only by law lot width, lot width requirements. However, in September 2016, MR037 Flag 2, 2006, set on 3/11 data, the street system in a plan of subdivision must be integrated with the system so that there's at least two points of access. Where a subdivision is to be developed in states, there must be at least two points of access at each state, one of which can be temporary. If the intent is not to have river and drag extend to, to the subject property as shown on the submitted sound, this application will not be consistent with the secondary plan, which means a secondary plan amendment will be required. To council meeting for a police application, RPA recommends that you have, you have most subject with two conditions, this study is presented before. That concludes my presentation, thank you.
Do, councilors have any questions for the planning? Councilwoman Campbell, any questions?
None at this, this time.
Councilperson Shetty?
Yeah, just want to... Can you just go back one slide, that last paragraph, not, right at the end? So it's saying that if we don't have that secondary access, that it no longer meets the secondary plan? Does it say that it has to be a permanent access, or that it could be an emergency access, as we've done in other developments in West St. Paul?
According to the, to the secondary plan, it has to be, it has to be a joint, it has to show...
The warning of the plan, as shown in the secondary plan, shows that it has to connect. So if the applicant is not limited, or he wants to do something different, then that plan should be amended.
Just an addition point to my colleague, that's the secondary plan, there is also the subdivision, provincial subdivision regulations that outline, details of, like, subdivision properties. There's, as my colleague pointed out, those subdivision regulations require all subdivisions to have two points of access, and the access is supposed to be for vehicular access. So if there's not a connection to the south, that there are going to two, two points of access, and then the application also doesn't need that requirement as well. Because councilability is local to make whatever decision you want, we're just outlining what the policies and the regulations say.
Yeah, it's, it states two accesses, but it does not state that it has to be a permanent access. It, it doesn't state that it, doesn't have to be, but it doesn't state that it does have to be. We can have it as a, you know, an emergency access, same as we've done in previous developments in West St. Paul. I'm just going to use an example, Trails Development that wanted to hook up the Baldup, it never hooked up there, but we do have an emergency access in maybe...
You would state that...
I know it's going to be a game back and forth over the mic, so...
You, you suggested the subdivision policies, provincial subdivision regulations, they outline that secondary access in subdivision is needed for traffic flow, so having a temporary notice, I'm not sure if that's, that's made in the technical, but once again, that's well taken, precision.
Councilor, Councilbacked Cannon, you have any questions?
None at this time.
Councilwoman Clive, you have any questions?
Did I trip anybody?
I got it.
Thank you. Good catch.
Yeah, to the planner, you've indicated that this is required for the secondary plan. I've got the West St. Paul North Secondary Plan here. Can you direct me to where it says there has to be a road to Rivers Edge Drive? Could you give me the page? Just want to see that.
Yeah, it's, it states two accesses, but it does not state that it has to be a permanent access. It, it doesn't state that it doesn't have to be, but it doesn't state that it does have to be. We can have it as a, you know, an emergency access, same as we've done in previous developments in West St. Paul. I'm just gonna use an example, Trails Development that wanted to hook up the Baldup. It never hooked up there, but we do have an emergency access in maybe... I know, it's gonna be a game back and forth over the mic, so...
Uh, you, you suggested the subdivision, uh, policies, provincial subdivision regulations, they align that secondary access and subdivision is needed for traffic flow. So having a temporary access, I'm not sure if that's, uh, that's making that as a temporary access. But once again, that's as well to make a decision through...
Councilor... Councilor Backton, you got any questions?
None at this time.
Councilor, um, Clive, you got any questions?
Did I trip anybody?
I got it.
Good catch.
Uh, yeah, to the planner, you've indicated that this is required for the secondary plan. I've got the West St. Paul North Secondary Plan here. Can you direct me to where it says there has to be a road to River's Edge Drive? Could you give me the page? Just wanna see that. And I, and I will make the comment, actually looking for that. River's Edge has only one entry. So according to what you're saying, it does not follow secondary plan. Uh, River Crest has no, only one entrance, does not follow the secondary plan. Uh, so Jackton Road has one entrance, doesn't follow the secondary plan. Like, um, so I'm kind of wondering where this is in the secondary plan? And if it's previously been done, why could it not be done now?
So the secondary plan, uh, aside from all the, all the warnings and all the tests, uh, it has some other... Uh, the secondary plan... Uh, the secondary plan, aside from all the tests, uh, has some other marks at the back. So the map is what I'm referencing here, and there, when we say a plan is consistent with the secondary plan, we're saying it's constant before the test and the marks. So if you look at the map that I'm looking at, which is called the West Secondary Plan, uh, Secondary Plan, in the transportation network plan, it shows, uh, the connection with the north. It shows the river, uh, river's street connected to this other side, and it shows a connection to PTH nine.
Is this a map you're talking about?
Yes. Yeah, that's a map.
That is the map?
That's the map, yeah.
Okay.
So the, the plan has to meet that, or else it has to be amended.
Okay, so under the letter that we received from MI, it says connectivity to the adjacent lands to the north.
Which is this?
Right, so where in the subdivision is that?
Uh, it's not currently being shown on the plan of subdivision as submitted, but, yeah, but...
On the microphone.
Sorry. Uh, that, that, uh, plan, that is, uh, the plan that shows the north is currently being shown to, in the, in the plan of subdivision. What I remember, the applicant say that there's something they're willing to do.
So the subdivision would have to be revamped to accommodate that?
That's a connecting condition.
Yeah, so if we approve this without that, then we have to put in a condition that they have to meet the secondary plan and put a north one in. Could we put a north one in and alleviate the River's Edge connection? So that there's two access points, there's one on Parkside, and there's one in the north. And I believe the developer was willing to do that, so is that a possibility?
That, that would be a possibility.
Thank you.
Do any other councilors have any more questions? Okay, so then we'll go on to, uh, I'll ask Mr. Lyles if there is anyone registered for the applicant. They have a, an opportunity to address council.
Do you have any of Jackie Wilkie with us, registered and supported for the... If you could put up our presentation for the center, please?
Can you speak louder, Jackie, please?
I, I will, if ever to... Lainey? So the first few slides are, sorry, um, it's difficult to have it behind me as I'm trying to make sure it's a great spot. Uh, the first few slides here are, are a reiteration of the planning information that is provided by our RPD. Uh, just the location of the site at the north end of, uh, West St. Paul. Uh, and then the, um, the key objectives, uh, in the West St. Paul, uh, North Secondary Plan in regards to, uh, this development, which we had gone through on the previous, uh, applica, uh, previous application as well. Um, and then bringing up, uh, to the next, can you go two, two forward, please? Um, as we've been speaking of, or as has been just discussed, uh, in regards to the connections on map three, uh, the secondary plan, uh, showing the, uh, roadway connections, um, and the, uh, trail connections as well, which is what we are also looking to ensure that we meet. If we go to the next couple of slides, I'm just gonna, um, just to show this again, I'm not really gonna talk too much because we spoke to her previously. We did have, uh, virtual stakeholder meetings, uh, in, uh, twenty-twenty-one, uh, for the, um... For the, uh, stakeholder meeting, and then twenty-twenty-two, number eight, January two, for the public open house. Um, there was a comment from the previous application from, from the council that, uh, at that time we were told that it would be up to four years for water to be brought to the site. We understand that, but that was a year, uh, almost two years, uh, a year ago almost for the open house and, uh, almost two years from when we started first started this process. It is a lengthy process, um, so we understand that it takes time, and we are working so that we can, um, be most efficient with our time in the planning approval process, working with, uh, the other, uh, processes for providing these, the required servicing to this site. Um, the next, if you go on to the comments from circulation. Uh, once again, we're reviewing the comments that came in from circulation, uh, in regards to, um, the, uh, amount of the highways. We, uh, are having our subdivision aligned with Park Street Drive. Uh, the plan shows a connection, uh, right-of-way connection to the south. We, um, will have one to the north as well, which we'll have at the moment. Um, and how those work, uh, will be a discussion today and make some adjustments, and that can be, um, part of the requirements for the, for the approval of the application. Um, and for the second page of the comments of circulation in regards to the historic resource branch, we want to bring up again, uh, that we are, uh, working with the, uh, indigenous nation and the, uh, historic resource branch to ensure that historic resources are, um, as they put it, mitigated on the site, uh, within jury of development, uh, so that none of the cultural or, uh, cultural heritage is lost, uh, within our development. If we can go to the next slide, please. The proposed subdivision will establish, uh, the road layout for the development, the location of parks, and lots for single-family and lot development. We're working on, we're working this route of development so that we can create the framework for future applications for all the subdivision. Again, we understand that this is going to be a long process, so we're working on doing this in steps. On this plan, you'll see the, uh, main entrance, um, coming in off of, uh, highway, up the horizontal highway, uh, change number nine. It is a divided high, or a divided entrance, so that you have a median in the middle, so you have two ways of access onto, uh, onto Main Street. If there's ever a, uh, an emergency, there will always be one side that is open. Uh, we are showing the connection to River's Edge, um, as we have discussed previously, and we will discuss again here on what the role of council is for that connection. And we're also showing in blue here, uh, proposed future road. This is, uh, in block twenty-one, which should be the last block to be developed. Um, we will ensure that the road right-of-way is shown in that block to go to the north as well. This is architectural plan of development, as we showed earlier. Uh, showing our intent on, uh, the future applications for subdivision, uh, to give it a little box. Uh, working with the RC zoning, uh, a new, uh, sixty-foot wide lots both showing in orange. Uh, the, um, ten quarter, or, uh, that's, uh, mineral seventy-foot, and lower mineral seventy-foot, and greenish color, uh, for the greeny-yellow pools, uh, each time for the, for the lots. So we have a wide variety of lots within this development, and allows for the variety of people to be able to afford to go within this area. Also on this plan, we'll see that there are tree-lined streets in the whole of ours, pathway connections... Pathway connections, uh, along the street, uh, through the...
Can, can we just hold on, because I think he turned it down out there.
Just, just wait a minute.
Just hold on a sec. But, it's like it's, it's like it's... Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
I gotta hold someone in the office to turn it up. I think he turned it down.
Yeah, I think it's off. Who would've turned it down? It's not even on.
They were on. They can't leave the room. Can't leave the room.
Who controls that?
I think Matt turned it down. That one's gonna cut it anyway.
We'll see how else one ends. Where did I drop off, if anybody could hear what I was saying? Is it the size of lots, or the variation of lots?
Tan, tan-colored. The tan color is seventy-foot.
Okay, the tan color are seventy-foot wide lots. The, uh, the blue and purple color are seventy-five-foot wide lots along the river, and the greeny-yellow color is eighty-to-ninety-foot wide lots along the river. So we have a wide variety of lots on the site, uh, where you can see that we are looking at doing and that are between, uh, sixty and, uh, sixty-nine foot wide in the, in the purple, or not, sorry, in the orange, throughout the site, uh, and everything will meet the requirements of the RC zoning. Throughout the site, we have, uh, public reserve, uh, in the, in the form of two main parks, as well as walkway connections throughout the development. Along PTH number nine, we have a, uh, wide area of, if you look at the next slide, I think it shows up in detail a little bit more. Along PTH nine, we have a wide area of public reserve for the pathway, which is considerably wider than that, uh, to the south, which will allow for tree planting, as well as, uh, the pathway within the public reserve area. This connects to, uh, the pathway system in the development and to the adjacent development at the south, uh, southwest corner of the site, as you can see in the upper left-hand picture. Pathways also coming through the development will connect up and go, uh, north-south, as well as east-west, um, connecting, uh, most of the, uh, residents to a green space.
Can you try the other mic now, I think they were doing something.
This is working?
Yes.
The image in the bottom right, uh, shows the, uh, connection to River's Edge as a right-of-way. Um, this one, uh, as we had spoken to previously, at the, uh, direction of council, um, with the other connection to the north could be made into an emergency access only, so that everybody has, uh, protection in case of an emergency. That way there are, is, everyone through River's Edge has access to the signal lights that will likely be required at, uh, our new connection, uh, if there's ever an issue, and they have their second way out of their development. If we can go to the next slide. The public reserves are planned in development to include large area available for active recreation in the center, uh, with a soccer field and open areas for play, as well as areas with, uh, trees and burning, uh, within the site. The pathways connect through this, uh, public reserve, uh, and, and back from, the pathways back, or at the back of many of the lots. The other public reserve is, uh, on the north end of the development, and we're proposing that include a, uh, playground in this area, as well as burning and pathways as a more passive, uh, recreation, uh, destination. And will also connect up to the pathways that, uh, run along the, uh, High Road corridor, uh, leading out to Main Street, so that, uh, everyone in the neighborhood has an ability to get fairly quickly to a pathway, um, that will connect up to the overall, uh, West St. Paul system. And if we can go to the next slide, please. These are, uh, some references of various, uh, elements within a development that we would be looking at incorporating. Um, on the left-hand side, you'll see a number of, uh, different signage types that could be used, uh, as a marker for the entry of the, up into the development. Uh, these have all been done, um, actually by our firm, uh, for various, uh, locations, both in the city and, again, in the neighborhood palais. Um, so they, an architectural or interesting art piece of, of a marker will be included. Um, to the top and right of the page, you'll see entry, park entry points that include, uh, paving areas, uh, planted decorative plantings, benches, waste receptacles, and some, uh, some lighting incorporated into those areas. That would be similar to what we're looking at here, as well as the connection with the playground being adjacent to the walkway for ease of access. And the examples that you see here are, uh, in, uh, St., or in St. Paul. If we go to the next... Uh, as I had spoken of, this is, uh, the, uh, block twenty-one in the, uh, in the development. This is intended to be held until the very end, uh, for, uh, development, um, which will be, uh, quite a ways down the road, uh, in the, in the development. One thing that will be included is the future road will be, uh, added into this and be done, or the future road right-of-way will be incorporated, uh, as part of the, uh, requirement. This area, um, if in the future, uh, council feels that it would be an appropriate place for seniors housing, which is part of the secondary plan requirements, that could be done. If not, um, it is the correct size to do another bay of residential, and it would be allotted out with another road right-of-way, meaning going through the center of this to be, uh, more single-family housing, uh, that is, um, what is determined at the, at that time of subdivision. If we go to the last, your next slide, please? As part of the subdivision, uh, architectural guidelines will be developed, uh, once the lots are, once they come back for lots. Um, in these guidelines, uh, they'll set out the requirements of housing forms, the quality of materials, that there'll be windows on front of sods, mix of colors within each house and between houses, landscaping requirements and standards for all developments, protection of the riverbank, fencing designs, and reiteration of bylaw requirements for yards, parking, building areas, sheds, et cetera, that we, uh, were, that we, and the RM, deem important to, uh, reinforce with the developers of each lot and homeowners of each lot. If we move to the next slide, please? So in our next steps, right now, we're in the public area for the, uh, subdivision, uh, into blocks. Following this, we'll be coming back to this RM with, uh, more applications for subdivision of each of the lots, um, as we get, uh, into the process. This won't be happening until we have all of our, um, requirements set up in the DA for ensuring that we have services, uh, available to us, and that the, uh, roads are approved, that all connections to the highways are approved, and that we have a plan for, uh, the historical resources that is acceptable. All of that will be part of, uh, our requirements moving forward, uh, with the development agreements and our diligence through this process. Do you have any questions?
Are you... Is that it for your presentation?
That's the end of our presentation.
Uh, Councilor Campbell, do you have any questions?
Uh, I'm just studying a couple things here, so I'll, I'll defer for a few minutes, please.
Councilor Shadon?
Not at, not at this time, thank you.
Councilor Backton?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mrs. Wilkie, thanks for the presentation. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, um, my first question that I asked during the rezoning. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, um, my first question that I asked you during the rezoning. So could you just maybe touch upon the access points and, uh, the access and degress points, I guess? Not access degress, but access points to the development and talk about perhaps, uh, in your, uh, response about, uh, Manitoba infrastructure, uh, and, and that issue that was brought up by the planners in terms of having two access points?
Uh, most definitely. If you could go back to our concept, please. So, uh, for the development, we have the, uh, access out onto Main Street, PTH number nine, uh, across from Park Street Drive, uh, which will be a divided entrance, so that we have those two points of entry. Um, we will also have a road, uh, going to the north, uh, that is in, uh, the future development area right now. It will become a road right-of-way as part of the requirements under this application. Uh, we are also showing the access north-south, because there is an access from River's Edge to our, uh, development at that point for the right-of-way. So it would be inappropriate for us to block it off as a lot. Um, but having the right-of-way gives the RM the ability to make the decision on how that road is developed, um, in that, within that right-of-way and how that right-of-way is developed. Um, with our access to the north, that would be our second point of access to the, to the site in the future, once the, uh, the landscaping develops. And it would connect further.
Okay, thank you for that. So, yeah, what you're saying is that because your entrance off of the PTH number nine has two entrance points, that's kind of gonna, that's, in your mind, gonna satisfy the MI requirements?
Yeah, for, for all, um, uh, temporary access points, uh, during construction until such time as everything is constructed, that will give us that, the, the two access points. That, as has been done, uh, as, as, um, Chancellor Flyer pointed out, for the other developments, uh, all the way along Main Street.
Okay, thank you. And then just, uh, with regards to the southern connection to River's Edge, you're talking about closing that or keeping it closed but open only for emergencies?
That would be, uh, what we heard from the public, um, in our, our public engagement, was that there was not a desire to see that as a everyday road, um, but that having that access for emergency, um, would be, uh, very helpful. Um, and we would, we, we have no issue with that. We support, uh, that, um, desire my council has, that is where they would like to go with this particular right-of-way. There's also, having it as a right-of-way also gives you the opportunity in the future if ever does need to be open, based on what's happening in the future. Um, again, that, that planning for the future is very important for, for the RM.
Okay, and then just with regards to, I made a comment earlier in the, in the rezoning, um, application, um, approval process, that if, uh, in terms of moving forward, if this development should go forward, um, do you, is your, is your client willing to, um, have information come back to council for approval regarding, you know, the, obviously the lots, the lot sizes, and, um, the trees, landscaping, other things like that?
Uh, we will be coming back for, uh, subdivision into lots, most definitely. I don't believe that there is a, um, mechanism right now for approval, uh, of landscape plans and, uh, what would be considered a, uh, grant approval in the city would affect. I don't believe there's a mechanism for that in the RM unless it's changed from the last applications that we've made, um, to have us come back to you for official, open conversation, uh, about plans in this area. But we will be working with the RM very diligently to ensure that it meets the requirements, um, and is, is reviewed by, uh, everyone at the RM prior to, uh, or any, uh, approval within the DA as well.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Councilor Irwin?
Okay, just a little bit of clarification. It's a little bit hard to hear you at one point, so I just wanted to clarify. So, um, I think you said tan, but they look orange to me on my screen. So the orange ones, what are the, what is the width on the orange one?
The orange and the, the majority of them, the orange, are the sixty to sixty-nine foot.
Okay.
Sixty-foot width, those are, those are the standard.
We don't know how many are sixty and how many are seven.
We are not at that, we, the reason that we're coming forward as a block plan right now, is that we are gonna come back with those details, add another application.
Okay, I, I guess what my, I'm a little confused about is that your division, subdivision right now is in blocks that are exactly the same shape as this.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to achieve, is so that we can ensure that they work with what we're planning. Um, but we need to, we wanna phase this over a bit of time, so that we know exactly which ones will become phase one. We haven't made a decision on where phase one would be, as, um, you had said, we still need to make sure that we know what our servicing is. So once we get our servicing organized, then we'll be able to have a better understanding of which blocks we're able to subdivide first, and how big those lots will be as we go. So we are planning on, this is what our concept is right now, is having the majority of the lots with, that you see here, as that sixty to sixty-nine foot width, and then moving up from there on some of the other lots.
Okay, and the yellow portion you said were eighty-foot lots, and the purple were seventy-five? Am I correct in that?
Uh, the Bongla River, yes.
Okay, and then the sort of light green, you said were seventy?
Uh, the, the, I guess I would consider them ten.
Or sagey colored?
The ones that are back on to, the back.
Yeah, the ones that are on Mariner's.
On the south side, yes.
The ones on Mariner's Trail?
Yeah, those ones are seventy.
Now, I asked the developer, uh, if he would consider making those seventy-five, 'cause that's what you'll hear from probably the majority of people that leave, uh, live there and are back onto there. Uh, I see that you have two small yellow ones there at Mariner's Trail.
Those are larger lots, those are eighty-foot.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Those are larger lots at eighty-foot? Right. Could that, um, be used to make the seventy lots a little bit bigger?
We were directed, when we were looking at this plan, um, through, uh, the public consultation, uh, to have them line up so that they weren't giving the, uh, weren't backing onto a disney home with two backyards, so that they would have frontage coming off of the same road, so that it, it was in line, um, rather than imposing on that neighbor and making it so that they had lots, back of lots on, onto the front of their house and the side of it.
So what you're doing is you're mirroring the, uh, two houses on River's Edge, is what you're doing?
We're following the, the pattern, yes, along that.
Oh, okay, so, um, your end lots kind of in, in between road that and, like, the River's Edge and the Mariner's Trail. Okay, um, one of the requirements of the development plan is an active transportation order, and, uh, I wonder if you could speak to that?
That's the, um, wider portion of property that we're providing to the RM along Main Street, um, where we have a wider width than anywhere else down Main Street, so we're giving that section all the way along Main Street on our property.
Okay, and also there was some, um, in the, uh, north development plan, it talks about trails and access to the river.
We have, uh, yeah, we have one access point, um, dedicated as PR coming out to the river, and there's also the, uh, hydrolands that are, are hydrolands that come up to the river. But we do have an access point coming up. That's the, um, small, the, the green section between the purple and the lighter green, um, straight out in the river.
Great, good, thank you. Um, and then, um, it says, "Do you like green spaces throughout the secondary plan in conjunction with the transportation, transportation network?" I think you addressed that. And a signal light, it goes to traffic report, said it didn't recommend a signal light. One thing I did notice on the traffic report is that it only included a single car for each, uh, lot that you're proposing. So it was like two hundred and thirty cars were proposed in that traffic study. And I would put to you that you're gonna have more than one car in these homes, because we don't have a bus service, and the average is two cars per home. So, um, having gone through this area and talked to people in this area, one of, one of the, uh, main things I heard was, "You know what the problem is? I can't use the trails, because I can't get across number nine." So I'm wondering if we can put a traffic signal on that area, because you're gonna have way more than two hundred cars. You're gonna have probably four hundred if you have two hundred lots. Um, what about a traffic signal? And I guess that will have to be clear with number nine. Is that, with, uh, with infrastructure, is that correct?
Yes, uh, we'd need to update, we will end up, we need to update our, uh, uh, traffic setting, um, and taking a look at, at the numbers. Once we have our final, um, our final plans within our lots that we're looking at here, we'll update this again and take a look at it. And it will be submitted to MI, and they will make the decision whether or not it warrants a signal. Um, we are hoping that it does. That is part of what we would really like to see, is a signal light in this location. So, um, that will be part of, uh, the review process of, um, once we get to access station.
Okay, 'cause I'm, I'm just gonna reference that, uh, another development on Main Street further down was to put a traffic signal up, the development, whatnot.
Yes, that as, as a requirement, as a requirement from MI.
Okay, so, once you do your subdivision, you're gonna have to come back, and if you're gonna do that many lots that we're proposing, you're gonna have more than two hundred and thirty cars.
In which case, a signal light will be required by MI, and that will all be dealt with during the development agreement stage, uh, when all of the plans are, are put together, so that we can, uh, confirm or adjust findings that have been done so far, uh, and, and determine with MI if a signal is warranted.
Okay, and one of the issues in the development plan also talks about a geotechnical engineer in court for bank slumping. Did, did you do that yet?
The, the settings in Denver is working on my side.
Okay, and it also states that you have to have proper setbacks, so that there is, um, no issues with, um, the embankments and the sloping of the embankments.
Correct, yeah. And then, so the lots are, um, deep enough to allow for that. On, on the plan that you see here, there are a couple of lines running through those river lots. Um, the one that's very straight is the flood, uh, the flood line, uh, which is very similar to a top of bank line, uh, on this property. And that would be a no, like, from that to the river is a no-development zone. Uh, the other line, which is, uh, sort of follows the line of the riverbank, is the forty-meter setback line that was recommended in the archaeological. So that's the area where we wanna make sure we have, uh, protection of, uh, archaeological elements as well. So to your point, yes, we are, we are mindful of the fact that we need to, uh, have protection of the riverbank, and that it is, um, that, that the lots have been, at the lock zone, has been, um, uh, done to allow for that.
Okay, just when you're drawing, um, you have a different drawing than I have in my package. Okay, 'cause in my package, I have a pond, and you're, and in your drawing, you don't have a pond. Um, so.
Took out the pond.
I don't know why that would be. And then, yeah, so you see on the right-hand side, I have that same thing, but on the left-hand side, um, you have a soccer field, and in my package, I have a pond.
Um, yes, we, the pond was, um, taken out. It was, uh, it was orig, uh, one of the early concepts, had a pond in that area. And in discussions, uh, with, uh, the RM, that it was determined that a pond was not desirable in the amount of maintenance for the RM, and that it could be, uh, the water retention could be achieved through, uh, underground pipes, which is the direction that we're wanting to move forward in, which also freed up an area, uh, for a more active recreation site.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at this and my conceptual drawings are very different from yours. So. So what you've done is you've reduced the, um, area that was the pond and put more lots in there. Is that correct?
We put in an additional road with, uh, yeah, because the pond was not required. And we, we still needed to have the PR, so we condensed the PR into the, and, and adjustments and configurations so that we could fit the field in.
Okay, thank you for, uh, answering those questions. One, one thing I did, I wanted to refer to your traffic study. And, uh, your traffic study states, "Development, traffic, senior adult housing, single-family, thirty-eight dwelling units," that's what you have here.
That, again, that was, that was based on an early concept, um, where we, uh, I had discussed, uh, the final block twenty-one, so that potentially in the future, if council decides, that's why we're helping that to the very end of development on this particular, uh, site. If council decides that they want to have senior housing in this area, which is permitted under the secondary plan, that would be the location that we would do it. Again, if that is not what is determined by council, then it will be, there's sufficient room there to do it as single-family lots with an extra road opening.
So I know that you've been on this application for a while. I do recall you being in the open houses and, um, and, and putting this forward and done a lot of work on this, and I really appreciate that, because, uh, you always put something nice together. Uh, what I, what I'm wondering is, there was some talk of multifamily in that square that's undeveloped. So you've got the thirty, so if the multifamily doesn't get developed, there's thirty-eight single-family lots, correct?
No, no, there'd be more than thirty-eight single-family lots in there. It would be similar, it would be similar to the, um, it's similar in size to the landscaping approach, uh, of the, of the main entrance. So it would be similar to that in size.
Certainly.
Sorry.
Okay, yeah, so that if you, it's a mirror image, right?
If you mirrored that wallwork, it would be very similar in size.
Okay, and the multifamily senior housing would be the same way?
Uh, it would fit within that space, uh, but it would have a private road in the wall, so it wouldn't have a road opening.
Okay, and just a question for you, on the senior housing, I know that Human Rights Commission says we can't say that. You can't say senior housing. So how would you, as the planner, go about, um, doing senior housing when they say you can't say that is prejudicial?
Um, anyone can move into any, um, development in any way. Um, what happens is that it is designed and developed in such a way that it is more, um, it is marketed towards a certain demographic, um, that it is more, um, appealing to them to live in that area. So that becomes a method, that becomes how it becomes senior housing, is that more people who are of senior age wish to live there. It is not saying that somebody who is of a younger age can't live there. But there would be requirements that, you know, you're, if it, if you did this, it would be bungalow, uh, bungalow condo senior housing is what the original thought was. So it would be something where you aren't going to be building a, uh, large, uh, house in that spot with, uh, a whole bunch of RVs. There would be requirements within that development that suits the needs of those who are, are, are the term.
So you're suggesting that would be in a development plan in that area?
In that area, it would be something that would be part of that. If that is the will of council, it is not defined at this point. It is, again, that is a concept that came out as an idea, that is the very last part of the development. It is not, that's why it's not defined at this point. So if that were to help it happen, it would be in the future.
Well, I think, I think we would have to give that some forethought, because there has to be a mechanism for that, because right now, a developer can go in there and subdivide, and once a developer subdivides, as yourself or Mr. Gray, they walk away, right? It's who comes and buys those lots, what they develop on, right?
Uh, yes, and which is why the developer is holding that lot to the very end. And it's, if, when we put that into the, uh, requirements, that that is the last piece to be developed, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Wilkie, I just had another follow-up question. I like that you added some imagery of, um, what the, uh, development's gonna look like with the parks and the lighting, and you talked about on your slide presentation that there's gonna be some architectural guidelines and standards. Could you expand a little for both that and what that means?
Um, so, for architectural guidelines and standards, uh, those are very standard now with subdivision development. Uh, it sets out all of the requirements, um, for anyone who is building, uh, a home in the area and is taking over the property. It becomes a part of the builder, or a part of the sale agreement. So the, um, So the architectural guidelines are attached to that, so everyone knows what is required. So with that, if you were to build a house, it would have to have a certain amount of high-end finishes on the front. You have to have doors, windows, garage doors in a certain way. You couldn't have your house looking identical to the house next door, so that there's some variety here of the development. It would also have landscape standards, so that you are required to do a certain amount of landscaping in your yard. See if that gets done, I ought to deposit the issues back. That's usually the mechanism that provides for homeowners to complete developments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilor Campbell, do you have anything? Yes, I got a question. So what type of wastewater system do you have in this development here? Would you have holding tanks in each lot, or?
No, we'd be looking at, again, we're going to be doing our review of everything, but we're looking at doing sewer connection to the city of Winnipeg.
Are you able to do directly to that line? That's a one-foot line, I believe. Is that a low-pressure line coming from San Antonio?
No, we have a listation.
Oh, you put in a listation? Oh, and then we'll go, okay. Okay, thank you very much. Where does the listation go?
It would be up, let me, right next door to the other, up in the southwest corner, sorry. Trying to get my directions better. So if you go to, sorry, if you go to the next page. There you go. So you can see on the top left-hand corner where we have the two pathways, there's space in there for a listation. It hasn't been obviously designed yet, so it's not shown on the plans just yet, but that would be the location for it.
And how much land have you set aside for green space?
We're over 10%.
Over 10%? So have you considered to run a trail alongside the river as part of the green space, or?
No, we have not looked at that. As there is no connection point to the north or south, having an isolated trail in this one section and having that become responsibility of the RM for all bank stabilization, maintenance, et cetera, was not desirable at that time and was not put forward as something that would be a request for us. So it is having individual lots come to the river.
Are you open to the idea to do that, if council changes their mind?
No.
Who's responsible for doing the protection of the road bank? The property owner or will the developer do that before?
A combination of the developer, yeah, developer and then property owner for long-term maintenance.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so I'll ask Ms. Elias if there is anyone registered to, for it, to come forward?
Mr. Mayor, I just propose we do the time limit so that we don't get off track again.
I guess I'll just see how long it goes, like how long are you thinking of?
Five or eight minutes at the most. Sometimes we were 18 minutes last time, some of them.
Okay, I'll monitor it. I'll just ask that everybody keep it as short as brief as possible. And that if someone has already just mentioned it, that they just stand up and just agree that it's already been mentioned. So could we have the ones that come first, please?
Could you speak louder, please?
Yeah.
Is this better?
A little bit, a little bit louder, yeah.
So, very much, I would start backward from a comfort of a question. The architectural garden is going to be, you're going to have a flat front door, windows inside the door like a living room or a dining room. And you'll have a flat garage, a collect step on the front, hardy board, stone or some kind of other very specific design will be passed through to your project. What we're going to do is we're going to actually have, when the builders submit a supply, we, as a block, will send an email to the planning board saying it's been approved by us, meaning that all the criteria we had sit in our limits, so therefore they need to approve it. Going back to, Mr. Chairman, brother, good question. Just want to give you some numbers, sir. From the River's Edge area, I had 10 people that had spoken sport. Including those 10 people, 34 sport leaders from River's Edge. Overall, in the city hall, I've got over 120 sport leaders. Just so you're aware, that's all in the city hall. Yes, they're from other parts of the city, but the majority of the people that make sport leaders go to town from the city hall. Just want to make it clear. The, just want, I'm not going to go over everything, just want to give you some examples. The upper part of the road, if allowed by council, senior bungalows, sorry, not senior, bungalow style condominiums or homes should be, should be council desired at the time. The road I'm proposing to be closed, that River's Edge, I had a big deal the other day. And I met with a few people who were in opposition because of that and we had a chat and assured them, I gave them the number to the MI, the representative in its care teams. I believe they've got confirmation from her that there is access to PH9. Now, if you look at the previous development, which is the River's Edge, the River's Edge Drive did not, it wasn't, wasn't planned where it is right now. So they had to make some adjustments to their road, just like orbiting tours, to line up with the park creeks. To go over the traffic study, I'm not a traffic engineer, nor am I going to be. So given professionals to do the study, they asked for an account, how many homes are going to be built? We gave them approximate account, which is approximately 280 or whatever homes. And they did the study according to that. There is some margin that we walked it down and we will go back once we have all the homes allocated for these lots. That's what I had just to kind of go over what J R P presented. I do have a major concern as an applicant, as a stakeholder, sir, because you already on, Mr. Chairman, brought up a comment. Is there any conflict here? Does anybody have a conflict here? So I don't know what the, your guidelines dictate for conflict, but I have a concern as an applicant. During the election, they were not talking about what's going to be happening on this particular site. And it was an open application, the application started back in August and I wasn't answering a lot of questions on Facebook. Recently, I've been called a funny graver, funny grabber, blah, blah, blah. I am going to stay, I have a lot for me on the property, just want to make sure. And I'm going to be neighbor to some of these folks who are living in River's Edge. So I don't want them coming into my house, you know, once we're, once we're done. But I do have a major concern about one of the councilors making comments about this property to the River's Edge people while elections are going on. I did send a letter to see if it exists. Then I got a response from this councilor saying, I was doing, I was saying this, wasn't saying, you know, these particular things, I was saying these things. At the end of the day, I think it's a conflict where you cannot talk about open application. That's my concern. Also, during the last hearing, at about an hour and eight, six minutes, it was brought to your attention, to the panel's attention, and the councilor actually admitted on camera that there was some discussion going on at the time. Then at about one hour and eight minutes, Councilor Campbell asked who it was and the person sitting who was making these comments pointed out to the councilors. At about three hours, three minutes mark, one of the persons who spoke in opposition also confirmed with the same permissions. So I am asking the panel if there's any rules and regulations regarding conflict of interest. I think should be looked at. I am standing here, who's invested a lot of money into the city hall. And I want to be in her property, I want a fair application process here. I think you've got a whole, a quarter of that list that you took both of them. And I looked upon you to see if there's anything that could be done. And the councilor that was, that compromised, the ethics should be moved from this community.
Say again, please?
The councilor who was compromised, the quarter of that list should be moved from this community.
Can I just take five minutes here, please? Can we, we're going to take a recess for ten minutes? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we've, we've met and we've, we're going to continue on. We're going to allow our councillor Clybert to make a statement.
I believe that in this application, I can make a good decision based on the evidence. Thank you.
Okay, so now we ask if there is any more persons, individuals for the application to come forward?
Yes, we have Al Sriptha. Al Sriptha is in favor. We also have Charanet Char. Charanet Char. George Howard.
Hi, my name is George Howard, I reside at 83 Pine Valley Drive in Winnipeg. Do not live in the west of Paul, I do own residential lots. I am in support of this application for two main reasons. First one is I am a homebuilding business and I've seen a lot of developments in and around Winnipeg as well as Saskatchewan, Alberta. For a bedroom community, I produce the quality development with a lot of thought put into it. It's also, I think you're going to see a move away from these types of lots where a lot of people are expressing that these are small. But if you really look, it's interesting, the river lots are actually much larger than the ones next door to River's Edge. But beside that issue, beside that issue, you're going to see, if you read the 2050 plan that incorporates a bunch of projects, the way I understand it is coming in the future, is city-sized lots are going to be authorized along these bedroom communities. As a builder, I don't build the trap holder stuff, or it's a little more custom, a little more upscale. There's a scarcity of lots, so obviously I'm interested and I'd like to be able to build some homes in this area. You know, the city-sized lots, if this, if the development side does continue to be delayed, at some point, you know, I'd hate to see someone like Mr. Barlow open his arms and sell it to a larger group. They're not going to have the owner and a planning person sitting. They're going to have three high-priced lawyers and they'll push and push and they'll squeeze as many lots in as they can. For that reason, I think this, to me, looks like a great opportunity. The homes, I know what the home cost of homes are, they're going to be upscale homes. There's a lot of planning going on, I think there's a fairly wide trail where we can chase the homes.
Can I ask you just to wind it up?
In River's Edge. And that's the main reason I'm in support of it. The second reason, very quickly, is I own these river lots and I'm willing to build it. So yes, I don't want to see, I don't want to drive through multifamily or duplexes or anything like that to come in here and I'm not seeing that, so I'd like to see that and ensure that's enforced. Spend a bunch of money buying a home on the river. So those are the two basic reasons I would support this application.
So one of them was because you're a home builder, and what was the second reason?
I'd like to live in this development.
Oh, you like to live in this?
River lots are very, very difficult to obtain, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Rochelle Unseline? Amy Thader? Secunder Moki? Garth Sudden? Calvad Singh Rah? Arjinder Dhilli? Vlad Mosk...
Infray. Infray.
Ren... Ren Juan Rah? Harsh Thingis Rah? Brad Wren?
Tony Texer?
Tony Texer?
Sorry, I was waiting, can I do something?
Your tax sponsor.
I can't, do you want to sign your post?
Have you all signed?
No, because I was...
Well, can you show for everyone who's not in and anyone who wants to speak out?
Hey, Tony Texer, 246 River Road. I just don't want to regurgitate and make a brief, for the same reasons I supported the rezoning at the last, at the last hearing this past Thursday, for obvious reasons of economic benefit that goes to Westing Hall and continuing the momentum that's enjoyed over the last one between one of the primary communities. Again, there are many people that want the, who want this size lot. There's a void right now, they don't exist in Westing Hall, these size lots. They're not, as I pointed out, even though the application says smaller, it only says small lots. They're not really small lots when you look at, when you look at the city, when you're making a compare to that. They're not all small lots, so they're very, I mean, we have some lots that are in the border, two quarters of acre there, the ones on the river. So, you know, I think, once again, I urge council to look at this void. It is a little bit disheartening that there's, there's groups, there's certain groups of people out there that just keep regurgitating the negative, the spirit of robbery going on. They have to look beyond that and move forward because this is an important application. I think this is not only, I think this will define the direction of how Westing Hall will move forward in the next few years and in times of economic uncertainty like we're facing. We don't want it to be left behind, I think.
So your main point was?
Economic.
Economic development, that was your main point, why you approve of this?
Right, sorry.
Your main point for approving of this was because of economic development?
Well, it was the obvious economic benefits to Westing Hall, the, everything that I just described, the filling void of the market that wants to see these size lots in the area and the livability and the general growth of the RM.
Okay, thank you.
years and looking at from that angle, uh, the demands for the lots is great and I believe now they're, they're wired in every uh, lighting and every uh, uh, range, so people who like to have little, large lots and be more, they have no choice if they were to support lots before, so everybody can now have their portfolio and they have the option now. I am for, for the subdivision and I think it's a great asset for the area of West St Paul, thank you.
Nataj Bharam.
Hi, sport.
Ranjit Dollywall. Lupinder Singh Gill. Jesse Brah, pardon me, Jesse Brah.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council, I'll be brief, just nothing to labor, some of the points I've already debated by anyone else that's heard of you, so. Again, my name is Jesse Brah, twenty-nine years of age, living in Winnipeg, Minnesota, just off the Panastor Row, so I'm right at pretty much the end of the city and the reason why I bring that up, of course, is because, you know, living on headmaster's support that I'm right, uh, I'm pretty much as close as I can be to the country field, just about the east St Paul and west St Paul, but I'm still in the city. I'll also add that I'm recently married, practice law for a living, I'm dating my wife, who's uh, going to be, I think, in the city field very soon and, and again, the reason I bring this thing up is because for young professionals such as ourselves, the proposed subdivision, I think, is, is perfect in that it maintains and strikes at the appropriate balance between retainability with respect to the size of lots and I appreciate some of the commentary with respect to RG versus RC, but you know, can I be given some of our workplace values that we have, it's, it's highly over risk to, to take care of and maintain a lot of, of, you know, and things that are too big a size. And I think there was someone here last time that made that point as well, so I can tell you that with respect to sort of uh, the day in, day out of my schedule, I think, and the schedule, I think, of others that are here that are sort of in the same uh, point of their life, with respect to expanding the family, wanting to, you know, move into a community like West St Paul, it's one fourth of the opportunity to be in a community where there's lot sizes, you know, that are big in its picture, but are also, you know, retainable, I think uh, this is the appropriate subdivision here. I think this is a, a great plan and I am totally in support of this. Unless you guys have any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darjit Gillen.
Right.
Satnam Singh. Harbir Akash. Yerdav Dowal. Frank Jessick. Brenda Holden. Peter Bo- Bo Tiatas.
Okay, yeah, just for everybody, I am not opposed to application, obviously, but the developer uh, pretty much brings lots of a, a pretty good size of development, uh, but I am asking the developer to consider the people, the south of Riverside, um, for the most part, they're accepting development, the property is there, but uh, just the smaller lots of, the development can mirror the lots of seventy-five feet, I think I have most of Riverside on board with this and uh, close the, the traffic road, Riverside and the access road, I think that would mean a lot to adjacent neighbors of Riverside. Uh, for the most part, I am excited for having developers come in, uh, every time West St Paul puts up a development, they're presenting, making lots and fills up pretty quickly, so there is a means for uh, for movement in West St Paul, increase your tax base and uh, and also live in West St Paul, work in West St Paul. I currently live in West St Paul at four fifty-seven Main Street, uh, just a couple lots south of the development and I also work in West St Paul. I'd like to see more people move into West St Paul, because most of them run businesses and live in West St Paul and also lacking employees, so this is a great opportunity for myself and other business owners, to bring more employees into West St Paul. So again, I just ask the developers if they would mirror the lots, the adjacent south property, uh, maybe close off that road, I think everybody would be happy. That's uh, that's it.
Walter Malitski.
Paul Winder.
Tony Malinchuk.
Hello, very good. So yeah, I'm in Elchuck, I'm a ten twenty-six Poshak, I've been, what's your call, almost ten years. Uh, like Pete, I'm also a business owner as well, my office and my, my businesses in West St Paul, which is just lucky for me and just down the road from my house, that was a gift of God, I guess. Um, but in saying that, I've been here long enough to see some really bad developments being provided by this, by this council and I'm very supportive for it because I'm all about the smaller lots, but not really small lots, like we talked about in St Winnipeg. I think Riverside, I agree with everyone that believes that you have the most beautiful uh, developments West St Paul's ever had. The five feet that they worry about on the near side, I guess it's a big deal, but the houses across the street from them have their houses not lined up either, so I'm not too sure why it's such a big deal, but I guess with the five feet, it's a big deal. I think it's just like the landscape of the arts, that you're privileged enough to live in a development that everyone has a landscape of the art, because you're more happy to go to the last three or four developments this council approved and drive through it nine years later and still beats, piles of mud and just a disaster. And these are eight hundred thousand dollars of housing homes that look like a junkyard. And so, yeah, one of this council approved this kind of development, so it sets a standard for anyone else to come in here, that this, this kind of stuff needs to be, to be in here now because what we did in the past doesn't work because people can't afford it with big smoke and want the big yards, my friends will be here today, wants to build a second country, set a city, west only country, but doesn't realize the history of that harvest, that's grass, and he's a lawyer, so he has to hire someone, he has to have a septic tank or holding tanks on a field and you know, fast three hundred bucks on and it's just a carving for the rest of your life. So I really think that they'll have the sewer and water, uh, the privilege for the peoples in Riverside and they'll be privileged to live in all of the passes that's all happened.
Thank you. Thank you.
Verpal Dollywall. Jagman Gill. Looks like Buddha Singh Gillen. Arjinder Gill. Nisha Tarkill. Also in favor, I, I can't make up the first name, it, it looks like Mr. Neg- Negra or Mrs. Negra.
I've got five minute timer, so.
And Mandi K- Carr. Mario Lo- oh, sorry. Gardas Sekhon. Avinder Dowal. Sanja Sharma. Jasvir Singh. Gord Bragg. Anitha Bharam. Hansapath Pasaporn. Arji Singh Greval or Greval. Sarjit Singh Sandhu.
Yep.
Raj Sandhu.
Sorry.
Bob Singh. Maninder Greval. Looks like uh, Harvey Akal.
Yeah. Good evening, I just wanna say I'm a major, uh, I'm a two o quarter trail driver on the trails of West St Paul, uh, I'd like to say that I'm only here because of the subdivision, uh, Winnipeg is getting small, so I'm like, again, I'm young as well, I'm like four years old, so I've moved into this area. The ability to have another subdivision like this is great, to obviously see a larger lot, um, but on the economic trade, I also feel like larger lots, about an acre, two acres or hard to manage, just like, you know, just you for yourself, um, at least with my lots, it's, it's less than acre, but I can manage it, it's making a lot of work. So yeah, um, like I said, I'm a major, I'm only thinking about the subdivision, but I'd love to see them.
Harajinder Singh. Can't make out the first name, H Singh Gillen, Tompkins Bay. Jaspreet Gillen. Girline Gillen. Darshan Gill, pardon me, Darshan Singh Gill. Cindy Bharam. Arjinder Paul Singh. Rajwinder Ladi. Gerpreet Kara, K-H-A-I-R-A. Michelle Michael Kanchenko. Surrender Paul Bharam. Sorry, my, my apologies, Surrender Par Singh Bharam. Colwinder Panter. Can't make up the name, twelve twenty-five Poshak Road. Arjinder Shahal. G. Shahal from Castleberry. Raj D. Dollywall. Daljinder Singh Shahal. Looks like Lupinder Singh. Shikwal Singh. That has, uh, that's everyone, sorry, that's everyone that has signed in this evening. Uh, we've also received a number of letters, um, that have been emailed and submitted to council ahead of the meeting. In total, there was a hundred and forty-four letters, uh, submitted in favor. Uh, some of the comments they submitted were many of the ones that we've heard today. Um, just for our audience, a, a lot of the comments received were that, uh, the developer engaged stakeholders and broader community to open houses and concerns were taken into careful consideration. The proposed subdivision application is the type of development needed in the area and is sensitive to the residents and neighbors. Is avoided in West St Paul for medium-sized lots, able to attract families and investment. Uh, it's important to grow our municipality as repairs will benefit and with more residents comes more commercial investment, which will bring everyday amenities. Uh, in addition, we, we did receive some late letters that were not submitted to council previously. Um, all of the, the comments submitted were the, the same as what you received before.
Okay.
Uh, we received one from Subdeep Sindu. Lakpreet Gill. Tarandi Baran. Tajinder Singh Hoti. Rajan Kinder or Kinda. P Singh Gill. Raj Sidhu. Jagman Bharam. Sol Brian Simmons. Harwinder Kalar. Harmit Seema. Brent Winter. Dave's, Dave Salesman. Larry McPake, it looks like.
You have most beautiful development West End Falls ever had. The five feet that they worry about on the nearest side. I guess it's a big deal, but the houses across the street from them have their houses not lined up either. I'm not too sure why it's such a big deal. I guess with the five feet, it's a big deal. I think just like the landscape of the arts, they're privileged enough to live in a development that everyone has a landscape of the art. Because you're more than happy to go to the last three or four developments this council approved and drive through it nine years later and still be some positive life and just a disaster. And these are eight hundred thousand dollars supposedly homes that look like a junkyard. And so, yeah, one of this council approved this kind of development, so it sets a standard for anyone else to come in here. This is this kind of stuff needs to be built. To be here now because what we did in the past doesn't work because people can't afford it with a big building. What the big yards, my friends will be here today. Wants to build a second country, a second city, west only country, but doesn't realize the history and how it's been scrapped. And he's a lawyer. He has to hire someone, he has to have a septic tank or holding tank on a field. And you'll pass three hundred bucks on, which is a car payment for the rest of your life. So I really think that they'll have the sewer and water, the privilege for the peoples in the river's edge. And they'll be privileged to live in all over the passes. That's all I have.
Thank you.
For Paul Dollywall. Jagman Gill. Looks like Buddha Saint Dylan. Arjinder Gill. Nishatarkill. Also in favor, I can't make out the first name. It looks like Mr. Negra or Mrs. Negra. And Mandi Kaur. Mario Lo, oh, sorry. Gardas Sekhon. Ivinder Jowal. Sanja Sharma. Jasvir Singh. Gord Brad. Anitha Brah. Hansapath Pasaporn. Arjeet Singh Grevall. Sarjit Singh Sandhu. Raj Sandhu. Bob Singh. Maninder Grevall. Looks like a. Javier Akhok.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say I'm in this area. I'm a two or four hour trail drive from the trails to West End Falls. I'd like to say that I'm only here because of the subdivision. Wouldn't think it's getting small. So I'm like, again, not young as well, I'm thirty-four years old, so I've moved into this area. The ability to have another subdivision like this is great to obviously larger lot. But on the economic trade, I also feel like larger lots about an acre, two acres or hard to manage just like, you know, just you for yourself. At least with like my lots, it's less than an acre, but I can manage it to make it work. So, yeah, I'm like, I'm a favor. I don't want to give you a subdivision.
Hera Jinder Singh. Can't make out the first name. H Singh Dylan, Tompkins Bay. Jasprit Dylan. Jaswinder Singh Dylan. Tezvir Gill. Jerpreet Gill. Jaswinder Sheera. Gurleen Dylan. Darshan Gill, pardon me, Darshan Singh Gill. Cindy Brah. Arjinder Paul Singh. Rajwinder Ladi. Gerpreet Khairah, K-H-A-I-R-A. Michelle Michael Panchenko. Surrender Paul Brah. Sorry, my, my apologies, Surrender Par Singh Brah. Kalinder Panthier. Can't make up the name, twelve twenty-five Toshak Road. Arjinder Shahal. G Shahal from Castleberry. Rajdeep Dollywall. Daljinder Singh Shahal. Looks like Rupinder Singh. Shikwal Singh. That has, that's everyone, that's everyone that has signed in this evening. We've also received a number of letters that have been emailed and submitted to council ahead of the meeting. In total, there was a hundred and forty-four letters submitted in favor. Some of the comments they submitted were many of the ones that we've heard today. Just for our audience, a lot of the comments received were that the developer engaged stakeholders and broader community to open houses and concerns were taken into careful consideration. The proposed subdivision application is the type of development needed in the area and is sensitive to the residents and neighbors. Is avoided unless they call for medium sized lots, able to attract families and investment. It's important to grow our municipality as repairs will benefit. And with more residents comes more commercial investment, which will bring everyday amenities. In addition, we did receive some late letters that were not submitted to council previously. All of the comments submitted were the same as what you received before. We received one from. Subdeep Sindhu. Lakpreet Gill. Tarandi. Baran. Tajinder Singh Hote. Rajan Kinder. Or Kinda. P Singh Gill. Raj Sidhu. Jagman Brah. Sol Brian Simmons. Harvinder Kalar. Harmit Seemar. Brent Winter. Dave Salesman. Larry McPake, it looks like. Ryan Schiper. Manjit Dylan. Or Manjit Dylan. Simranjit Dylan. Ajav Dylan. Ramid, Reven, sorry, Remande Wander. And that's all that's registered in favor.
Do you have any, do you have any ones in opposition?
Before we go to people in opposition, did anyone else in favor want to speak?
My name is Bob Anderson, I'm a part of the East Atlanta Council Speaker.
Name and address, please. Name?
Excuse me, you're too close to the light. It's coming out lumpy. I know, it's just hard to hear, sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
I'm here to double down on this report from us Thursday to be favor of the developments both of you. I think Mr. Far has been more than accommodating to meet with residents and or anybody that's concerned about any of the issues. As one of the speakers said, not a lot of owners that developers are willing to meet with regular residents and address all of those issues. So I think, given everything, it will be a great addition to the, to the area and as you want.
Thank you very much.
Anyone, anyone else in favor? In opposition, we have Henry Backer.
Got to speak up, please. Excuse me, can you speak up, please?
My name is Henry Backer, I live in the north of the Strangest Drive. And I'm in opposition to this subdivision plan. I'm an advocate for a new transportation trail for the full bank to run from Brenner to the river road. There's a business to validate. This subdivision plan will block potential for that trail and the dock and all of these. And I think it would be a very, very lost opposition. What I'm proposing for this subdivision is that the trail be constructed behind the river lots so they can one day, and even now with the residents of this town, be part of this transportation trail. I don't consider sidewalks to be a subdivision, we can have a transportation. They're risky, they're horrible, they're life on grounds. Now, along located, but then the resident will hire it, it's a good idea of a transportation trail. Such a trail should be wide and it should be smooth and it should be an area that has views and where people have opportunity to exercise and enjoy their experience. Such a trail is justified by the regulations. The building be listed in all strategic plan, good for the planning act supports it. The, listing all, all, some, secondary plan supported. And also the original subdivision is not supported. It's also the location of the street at the time in this development is not a good location. There is a third to be marked in St. Andrews, a subdivision that has a ten ended skirt that's a mixed gated future connection. And that's for the, the council would like to vote to see the back transportation. I would suggest that they will, that a mixed and easily employed so that the councils could make this decision or if they have it. And at the very least, I think there should be an easement and propose this, like of those street connections in the north east part of the development. So that the future, future councils then could decide to, this, this street is developed as part of the trail and extend to the, the street and center. So that's, just my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Frank Wasmini. Registered in opposition.
Everybody got nothing to ask to that?
Aneta Cruz. Mark Dawich, Mark Dawich? Roman Mark Dawich? Norma Albert?
Can you read again? Norma Albert, three twelve Albert Avenue, West St. Paul. I have three questions. Last call, last week, about the census numbers and the speed at which West St. Paul has been building this last decade. And if we, if we look at the government, so our Secretary of Finance were pretty much ten years old now and West St. Paul looks exactly better than it did ten years ago. So I believe that it's time for the council to slow down and again, take a look at our lovely secondary plans so that we can effectively look at how we should be moving into the next decade. Which will allow us to have the infrastructure catch up with the housing development. At this point, what I have seen is the introduction of new houses in various fields scattered around the municipality. And the infrastructure has not caught up with that at all. That includes wastewater, water, highways, commercial business development, schools. And so I think we need to take time to, to look at that. The planning act and the planning process is very basic, very logo. It's legislative, the plans have done their job of making sure that the applications are compliant with the bar that is set by the planning act. And historically in Manitoba, those bars are set very old, pretty much zero threshold. And so the onus is on these allies to then use their secondary plans and their bylaws to make sure that they are creating the communities that they want, that their residents want. And as I said last week, it is nice to see that these are sixty foot and not the forty-four foot lots. However, the surrounding area is very much one to five acres. And one acre is equivalent to over forty-three thousand square feet. So I would say to you that a sixty foot lot, which is eight thousand square feet, there are a lot of numbers between eight thousand and forty-three thousand. So there are various size lots that can accommodate the needs of many people. We have asked this developer if he would consider doing the seventy foot lots, seventy five foot lots, narrow along the eritters. I hope that he is still considering whether or not that's going to be possible because we're now relying on the goodwill of the developer. Once it passes certain stages, then we are relying on that goodwill. And as partners, all of us, the administration, our elected council is our voice, the developers, the residents, we're all in this together. And I believe that we need to sit back, take time, respect each other and have a dialogue. Not a wall along where somebody comes in and says, this is what you need. We need to talk back and forth and consider what each one is after so that we can come to a consensus. Thank you very much.
Helen Harley.
Helen Harley, ten forty-five Toshak Road, can you hear me?
Go a little louder.
The manager of the planning, the health plan, saying that centralized wastewater and tubular water places. Our plan is various designated GT, now designated RC, as of tonight. Such as in the secondary plant area, where this successful district is located. Other plans, our M plans, in fact, influence delivery of wastewater services in the municipal authority also. For several years, our, of West St. Paul, has planned and created local improvement districts to deliver centralized wastewater services to existing neighborhoods in the Red River corridor and the Middle Church secondary plant. The municipality's budget plans, as seen in the tax levy documents, five year plans and approved by councils over the years, reveal the municipality's council plans for expanding centralized wastewater services. Priority was given to development of centralized wastewater services to local improvement districts for LIDs, Manhattan Church Secondary Plant and the Red River corridor. Servicing the insisting priority areas in the Middle Church secondary plant area and the Red River corridor remain incomplete. Minnehawha, Kennedy, Hayawha have been scheduled, scheduled for centralized wastewater systems since twenty sixteen in tax levy by laws. Fourth, twenty twenty one, which was estimated to be at two million four hundred thousand. This local improvement district appears in financial plans, five year plans, agreed since twenty sixteen. This LID has all been delayed, most recently to twenty twenty two. Anyone can see the plan posted on the LID website under documents and downloads. The five year are the financial plan bylaws. And the five year plans appear on page fourteen of those documents. Ballack and Nye have been scheduled for centralized wastewater services since the twenty seventeen tax levy by law, four fourths in twenty twenty one. I'm, I'm hurrying.
What is this?
This local improvement district has already been delayed as well, most recently the twenty twenty four. Little of these established residential areas lose priority for the provision of centralized wastewater services in favor of a proposed new development being serviced. Through the plan new cell for the reservoir. The West St. Paul reservoir expanding was the topic of an administrative report seen on July seventeenth, twenty twenty two. The report gave reasons to expand the reservoir to provide increased supply of water. Critical for commercial and retail development. But increased capacity will allow more fire protection which is critical to business and residential properties. The new cell was satisfied with requirements for the next fifteen years. Administration also recommended increasing the ERU capital revenue for water to four thousand five hundred per lot. This recommendation was not part of the proposed resolution made on July seventh, twenty twenty two. Administration stated that specific decision had to cover council. The bylaw, the local bylaw or resolution was provided to council today. Mister Becker will play the pay, the current levy rate of three thousand five hundred per feet RDU as listed in the twenty sixteen by law, which is applicable to judgment December thirty first, twenty twenty four. The RN, because that bylaw was called that to council, is going to be losing one thousand dollars to the law.
Can you just summarize it up a bit, please?
Pardon me?
Are you able to just summarize it up as, as opposed to all the stat numbers? Like, we appreciate the numbers, but.
I'll just have another couple paragraphs.
So, I guess.
All right, if you're not interested.
No, I guess like.
So, okay. The resolution made to expand the reservoir and to increase the municipal, municipality's contribution to the new reservoir at just thirty percent more. That resolution just, just gone a little bit low because the tender report was done by October thirty first. So we're not going to get any, anything more than fifty fifty sharing, cost sharing with municipal water services. The evaluation will be spread at the council. What's in question now? It's going to be critical fire protection, retail development, existing developments on East Side Green, now it's finished.
So can I just?
Also, I add my attention to a new topic. These conceptual plans tell us not that they can change, they can be changed. What's promised is trying to unlock the world system that we don't understand as well. They can change as well, thank you.
So I guess just to summarize up what you were concerned about is that you felt that this new development might take away from the older, services away from the older areas? Is that right?
They not in money, sir, but the administration time and effort that's needed to put into the preparation of the projects.
Okay.
It's probably going forward.
Thank you very much.
Mister Mary, there were a few that are listed in favor that were missed.
Okay.
We have. A Qlan, it looks like, from Tibet Street. Amit Binda. Or Amit Bindrop?
I mean, sorry, can I interrupt just for a minute? Could, can I call a point of order? We have Mister Campbell shut off his render now. Because we've served twice by yesterday.
My, my ring, it showed off, it's a timer. Like we said we were going to do.
No, we didn't say that. It was left open, there was no time limit given.
Mister Mary, at two forty-five, one of the second people got told to wrap it up. The lawsuit was over seven minutes.
Okay. Point taken. Okay, go ahead.
We have Harban Singh registered in favor. Anu Brah. Balraj Hote.
Louder. Louder.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right, so point that was raised by Balraj Hokey.
Okay.
As a sustainability manager, I am passionate about sustainable communities. And the aqua transportation drill is in present decline. It has very good conditions to load that cell, which is crucial. Aquatransportation, walking, walking the dog, biking, springing kids, doing a nice job. Connection is a very important, and the connection of the cell is good. A connection along the river without any connection in the other trails. So, the trail along the river without any issue. That's my main points. Thank you.
Map Sima. Dravid Singh Turissa? T-U-R-I-S-A? Kadar Sarma? Maginder Shahal? H. Schultz? S. Taylor Coe? My apologies, we have you registered again. We can come back to you. We'll just finish up those again.
Four.
Four, sorry. Kaljit Hulman? Desio Alfonso? Kapri Kar? Jagdik Brar?
Mark.
Suk? Bango? B-H-A-N-G-O? Harpreet Sharma? Harlinder Dillon? Lukinda Manj? Sundar? I can't make out the last name. Address is on camera. And Arbit Paul Singh. And that's all we have registered in favor. Back to those in opposition, we have Stephen Choroski.
Good evening, everyone. We are opposed to the proposed smaller block sizes that are adjacent to the north of the American Trail.
Excuse me, sir? Did you give an address, please?
Oh, sorry, 87 Madison Square.
Okay.
We are opposed to the proposed smaller block sizes that are adjacent to the north of the American Trail. These seven lots should be the same and the mirror size of the present lots on the American Trail by the fact of being fair to the river edge neighborhood. We should also be taking into consideration as their new river lots that are being proposed on the river with the same respective sizes as the river lots in our present river edge development. If this, if the new proposed lots can match the river's edge river lots, then why not the new proposed lot in this new subdivision, which is adjacent to the American, no parallel trail, cannot match those sizes? We are opposed to the opening of the street that could be used for the, to allow the flow of the traffic from the new development. This new development and our river, river edge development could be respectively good neighborhood, but separate developments. This is taken primarily for the safety of our children that are just working on the streets at the week that because we do not have many sizes. The traffic will increase immensely, but the resident's safety will decrease drastically. After all, the new proposed development plan looks quite promising after our current wishes are being acknowledged, respected, and implemented. On our hand note, the developer is proposing subdivision of 21 blocks and without actual lot sizes. That should not be allowed because if the streets won't be put in, then it's too late to make any additional and significant changes to move them to accommodate the size of the individual housing. Therefore, the new proposed division should have all the pertinent exact information and dimensions and not that they are at least very, not for at least very first half of the initial phase, which is adjacent to our neighboring river edge. Thank you very much for your consideration and cooperation for the properly subdivision of this parcel of land and having in mind the well-being of both the respectful developments that can live happily ever after. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
That's it? You have no questions?
Well, thanks.
Travis Bowles? Gordon Bowles?
Agreed.
Daryl Pease?
So, this 137th Ridge Drive, the element is similar to... So, I am here on my post with this development. A couple things that I would say pissed off in regards to my presentation last time. I was not saying that they weren't allowing AMI to come on. It was on there, I asked a question because I heard that earlier on when someone asked me to come. So, that was in regards to what there. What Counselor Campbell had said, that someone at the three-hour point that was being said something that they weren't allowed. I never said that. I asked a question because they were allowing. We should have asked him. And in regards to, something concerned that I have, we're always talking about 75 to 60 width is one thing. But when you're talking about 8,000 square feet as opposed to 1,500 square feet, which is in RG zoning, that makes a whole difference. When you're talking about 20% coverage of land compared to a 40% coverage of land, that makes a whole difference. So, if you want to have, what everybody likes to say, reverse edges are the best developments out there, then match it. Not only width, but also depth and an actual land size. Doesn't have to be necessarily 1,500, maybe 4,000, but it should be a match. It's going to match it. My house is on the river. My lot is 75 wide, 128 deep, that's over 160 square feet, much bigger than that, especially this 133, much bigger than the 1000. Just suggesting, someone said that the river lots in new development is bigger than the river lots. I apologize, it's not, because that's not accurate. And I, my yard is similar to all the other yards that are in the development. So, what are the concerns I have? One of the things that I wish that a lot of people could have heard earlier on last week in regards to the development was not necessarily that someone said that the RG had to have wells, but it was implied by several people prior to, a lot of people from river's edge, maybe think that it was implied by several people that there was going to be a requirement of wells, and wells were no longer required or not allowed because there's issues with water. And I understand that. It wasn't until I asked a question and clarified about that, that RG is not saying you have to have wells, it's just purely how you decide. That's correct. And that was directed, I asked the Republican Council last week and asked their opinion. And that's not my concern, because a lot of people did not, they were not able to hear that. But I know we're not talking about those, we're talking about the development. If we're to have this development and we're to match our size, not only width and depth, and match us, because everybody says ours is great. Ours is, our Y lot is three quarters of acre. And it does take maybe an hour or a long time on it. But we're talking, people say, "Oh, we don't want these matches." They're not like that. We don't have two. It's not going to be one, two, because we're not asking for that. We're asking for exactly what's the same as along the river's edge space. And here, not seeing that with this plan, if these would be rechanged and modified, it would be just a proposal. That's it. All they're going to put in, once they put the streets in there, they're not going to be able to adjust any talent. As I like to say, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Uh, sorry, Ms. Daryl?
What?
I just, I did, no, I just have a question. This is just comments. Pardon me, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you for all your comments. I, you know, I listened to you last time and this time because, you know, you are one of the residents. So, I do respect and understand everything that you are having to say about your area. So, you're, you're on a river lottery now, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And you said you're, how deep? 160?
It depends on where the water comes up and down.
Okay. So, and then, you know, I was paying attention when they were drawing the high water lines for the new development. Where, where does that line kind of leave your yard for usable depth?
I'm not sure.
No, I was just, just curious. It's not, it's not that important. I was just curious. And then, would you be concerned if this was the same zoning as yours and they plunked in the same amount of wells in your area or in the new area as you guys currently have? Would you be concerned with your act report at all?
You and I have never existed in that before. I'm not, I didn't do that. And that would be up to the municipality to give me their recommendations on that. I thought I'd have someone say if they get wrong, that they really don't want to have any more wells being done in that area. That's why they're running water pump in. That was more issues. They're, they're not, they dig well, that's why they're looking for water to come there. But the suggestion by people, that the reason why they're not wanting to do it is because wells. And they never said they were going to, that it had to be done, but they should apply it. And it was meant, wells and RG were mentioned several times last week. And that's what I'm concerned with, because we're not giving the exact active information until I actually have to ask that question, whether wells would have to be in RG, and that is not the case.
Yeah, no, I agree. There was lots of, you weren't getting correct information last week. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
In opposition, we have Ryan Duplat. Glenn Russell.
Thank you for this time. I believe the archaeologists who are here just mentioned to people that there are various sites on this 105, 100, we can't even compare the land. And no one was to shoot that out because I wasn't the one that brought it up first. You know, I had lots and lots of contacts in the Manitoba community because I received a phone call on Monday. And when the developer talked to the people a year and a half, two years ago, we called them, the stakeholders, there's a lot in place. And I will tell you, it's called a technical advisory review. On any land that is historically important, this technical advisory review is supposed to take place prior to any, any discussion with the public, with the government, with anyone. And this was brought to my attention from a higher official in the government. I will not mention Peter Rehm. They told me to contact the ministry responsible and respect them. I sent an email to Rupert, I called him, and sent it on it. And when I talked last week, we were talking about a land the one section being filmed from agricultural to, I'll say residential. And you received a 47-page report. It was a field report done in 2004 by the archaeologist Chris Sutton. I was at the meeting, asked for it. And you talked about the 50,000 artifacts he found. He confirmed that I told you it was in two, a two-month period. And they were finding 1,000 artifacts a day. And it didn't work every day because they had that sometime off. While the technical advisory review takes months and months and months to do, I believe the developer would have filmed this, this is not a secret. I had the pleasure to talk to our representative planning, Cindy. Yesterday, I called him in the morning, told him I would mention this today. I did not want to have them, I wanted to give him some of that notice. So, technically, none of these meetings should have taken place here tonight. But I'd like to ask, send me if it's over. I'd ask them if you can comment on our technical advisory review. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a...
I asked, I asked, I asked you to confirm, I just played it to you.
He doesn't have to respond. We're just hearing oppositions to it, so, thank you very much. He can respond to you later. Do you want to respond or...
At this time, I do have a comment.
I told him I didn't want to answer. Thank you.
In opposition, we have Sophia Martin. Michelle Bosco. Mike Solvo. And Cassia Solvo.
Can you speak up, please? Yeah, name and address, please. Name and address, please, and...
West St. Paul.
First of all...
I'm going to say that I'm opposed, I'm not opposed to development, but I'd like to have the concrete plan, a proposed plan before I agree or disagree to have this developed in four months. We're just going to take it. That's all that is.
Okay, thank you.
Drew Panchenko in opposition. Ezra Panchenko? Michelle Laduda?
Fifty. Michelle, 105, where are you at, extra? In American River, okay?
Yep.
I'm opposed to the current plan, not proposed, not opposed to overall development. I think West St. Paul is in a growth phase and has wonderful things in its future. I would like to say, though, that as a West St. Paul resident, I feel that, and residents here speaking, we are the stakeholders that are maybe a little bit more important than the others that are coming here and saying, "West St. Paul needs to do this, we need to do that." We are not with him, we are not Saskatchewan, we are West St. Paul. And back in 2019, the council undertook a plan. Speaker, I don't like talking in public, so...
Just keep it short, please.
You undertook a strategic plan that reached out to those stakeholders, to the West St. Paul residents, and asked those residents what they wanted. And they did want growth, but they also came up with key factors on safety was a concern. They wanted a country lifestyle. They wanted bylaw enhancements. They wanted to know what is the impact on the future of these new developments and has that been well thought out and implemented? They wanted growth, but limited growth. So, when I see a plan of 280 households, and their average household in West St. Paul, three people per household, you're talking about 840 more people in that area. It's irrelevant how long it takes to home your lawn. It's irrelevant the actual size of the block. But what are we bringing, who are we bringing into the community? How many people are we bringing in? What does that safety look like? Now, you have 840 people coming out of that development into traffic. Now, you have 840 people coming out of that development into traffic. How does that impact the roads? How is that all impacting? How does that, how is that consistent with the West St. Paul residents' country lifestyle? Not necessarily lot sizes, but the implication of those lot sizes. And when you're looking at that plan that has that nice little purple, um, square in the corner that's dedicated to something else in the future, what is that? A senior's residence, a multi-class, a normal group going from 280 homes to something more beyond that. And I like to put this lady over here, say that there's just so many possibilities, maybes, but it looks like you're asking us to, to be in favor of something when we don't have anything concrete. Zoning in RG would have given residents the comfort that morally think so many wells in that area, it's going to have a wall, you know where it is. Um, in regards to, um, speaking to residents in River Edge Drive and not having, um, that much opposition, 10 people of 85 households, um, to me, that's only 11%. That, that, that's not a good, I didn't, wasn't asked. Yesterday, or not yesterday, sorry, Sunday was the whole first time I recorded this. I didn't have an opportunity to even be at the jury call to even to know that that was the implication of that. We, we, there was a letter, I think, that letter was all related to the election and all the gossiping and everything that was thrown out. That was not directed to me as a resident, saying, give me your thoughts on this. I may be in the wrong, but I have other neighbors that have these half-sinkings. So we've got 10 of us here that are saying no.
Okay, thank you.
Trevor Pushmee. Jennifer, Jennifer Pushmee. Um, Harold Schultz?
No, she's coming up.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
So, can I ask the question? Are, are you part of that group of 10?
Uh, I am a resident of River's Edge.
Yeah, but, uh, she mentioned that there was 10 of you back there. You came from that group. Are you part of that group of 10? No, okay. Good, go ahead.
Uh, I am just a freshman. I live at, as to the population in River's Edge. I bought my lot when it was hard to build. There was nothing there. Um, we were promised the moon with this development. There were a lot of things that everybody says that River's Edge is going to be fast once in West St. Paul. If you knew what you were promised originally, it could be so much better. This is here. This is here because of log in for shop wells from the municipality, which after a lot of typing, we did get a lot of the things that we promised, but there's still a lot of things we left unmet. I'm worried about the big section of future development. As been said already, that this could be multifamily housing. It could be a part of, we don't know what that could be. I would be here, basically, the same as a lot of the residents in the area, wanting to know exactly what this means. Coming to it and say, we're going to do a subdivision, but without an actual concrete plan is terrifying. There are so many promises that have been broken, touched, and passed, that I'm really, really worried that the concerns of the residents are not actually going to be all over cleared with the general, regular services.
Okay, thank you very much.
Harold Schultz.
Evening, Harold Schultz. I invite 20 of us together to COVID West St. Paul. First of all, I want to thank council for opening up the forum to the large group that developed over the last, um, three or so years and the COVID, uh, uh, crush that we found ourselves in that wasn't quite open, some transparency that perhaps, uh, we saw several hundred people here today making themselves available to, so thank you for that. Appreciate it. Let's see more of that in the future. I want to thank, uh, our developer friend Cindy Brar for the efforts that he and his development team have put together in trying to create a, uh, thoughtful development plan. Again, I stand here today and I must oppose the development plan, not for the sake of opposing development, but for the sake of opposing, um, a plan that is not concrete. How can we table a subdivision when we don't even have a plan? In fact, we don't even have a definitive plan to approve. So how can we approve a subdivision based on, again, as other residents have said, what ifs, and maybes, and promises, um, things that are not definitive? In addition to the lack of plan approval, I would suggest that we have serviceability challenge, issue ahead of us. Until a service agreement is in place, perhaps can guarantee service ability for ways to water, sewer, and water services for this development. How can we entertain selling lots to 200, maybe, or 200 individuals might buy a lot when they can't get water and they can't get sewer? Moreover, I'm concerned about public safety. Do we have a fire, a paramedic, and police services in place to service additional homes and additional residents? All right, you talk about the 200 cars from the traffic state. Um, I don't know, I've got six cars in that driveway. Can you put here the 42 cars in that driveway? Everybody does. So 200 cars, probably more like six or eight of the cars coming in about there. If a soccer field, like, it sounds great, but that generally means there's even more people coming. We don't have similar laws in our, in our current development in River's Edge. I oppose any connection to River's Edge with any kind of particular traffic pathway isn't perfect. There should be some integration between new community and existing community as far as moving people, whether it's by bicycle, whether it's by, um, physical mobility, whether it's pushing, you're, uh, above one in a wheelchair. The point is, interconnectivity is important, but not additional behavior connectivity. In the current plan, we've built 100% commitment that that will never open up again. I often refer one.
Then, can you just give us your key points, please?
No serviceability, no plan approval, public safety.
Okay, thank you very much. Pam, how many people are you showing?
How many more? Philip DeFauts?
10, all.
Philip DeFauts. Registered in support. Uh, Shelley Woodland. Darcy Woodland. Big Mazer? Oh, I'm sorry, my, uh, opposition. Big Mazer? Darren Zacharkew. Mariners Trail.
Excuse me, what can you say?
Garrett. Fifty, fifty-five Mariners Trail?
No, seven, one.
Nancy Zacharkew? Vladimir Lenk, Lenko?
I always say that. You all post the emotions, but it's true.
Excuse me, sir?
Uh, my name is Vladimir Radov, and my address is San Timon, Mariners Trail. My backyard facing new development. Not facing, behind my backyard.
Just wait, can you just make it as brief as possible? Can you make your objections as brief as possible?
Uh, short?
Yes. What don't you like about it?
Why do you do, on, on this discussion, there was no clear choice for RG posted on this plan? It's supposed to be a choice. In other way, it looks like it was already decided before. But doesn't matter what we say here. It was decided already and not, not even looking that, uh, this development flat is not ready. There is, like people before me said, there is no sewer, there is no line, there is nothing regarding to this even access. Sorry.
All right, Joey.
And most of all, uh, River Edge has, uh, not 100 lots, but nine, let's say. And smallest size is 15,000 square feet. Can you compare it to 8,000 square feet? It's twice less. And, by the way, nobody mentioned, but there was something left. The height of the house is 35 feet deep. Can you imagine three-story house at your backyard and on a small dining floor?
Okay.
And it looks like newer developments mostly occupied by younger families. They, they have a kid or they will have a kid. Our area doesn't have much daycare. And school. Not big two. And, and the plan, it says one car per house. It's not true. It's not going to be one car. And most of them will be parked on a, on a road, on the street. Because in our position, we don't have a public transportation. And everyone will drive by cars. Uh, there is no chance one car per house, minimum two. And can you imagine 200, over 200? So it's all emotional, but there is some.
Your points have already been heard, so, thank you very much.
Yeah, I haven't finished yet. Thank you. River Edge, very nice to you, and it's 90 lots for both 200, sorry. It, if it will be bigger lots, will be twice more than River Edge. And it's very nice, compact, and friendly community, which can support itself. And it would be easier for, get, uh, sewer and, uh, water to, to the development.
Okay, thank you.
I oppose this plan because it's, it's just proposition, but nobody says what can be changed. And possibly it will be, with those limits of 35,000.
Okay, thank you very much.
Galen Say, for, uh, the 10th candidate?
So, I would, I'm opposed. I've been offered many more to add.
Can we have your name and address, please?
The only thing that I want you to add is.
Can we have your name and address, please? Okay.
And I live at 90 Mariners Trail, West St. Paul, from 2006. So, all the people who have been opposing, I give them, and I don't have anything more to add. The only thing I want you to add is that you're counting those who oppose us and you're counting those who are in favor. I think, as a resident of the River's Edge, our voice should be counted first.
Okay.
And those who are not there, because we are the one who will affect it with a conceptual map. We need to be involved in all the way up to the actual building, if it ever happens.
Okay, thank you very much.
In opposition, Nonato Nidifis. That's all that's registered in opposition.
Okay.
Again, we received a number of letters, uh, prior to the meeting stating opposition. Those were provided to council.
I just want to ask a question. There's a whole bunch of us who were at the meeting first one who signed that in opposition. You don't have any of our names anymore?
We're, we're in opposition as well. We haven't, uh.
Look, we signed the other day, so I didn't sign again.
We changed, we changed that last meeting for a vote, and you don't consider that?
So the list from last time, you don't have that? We, we still have a number that are signed in for information?
No, we changed.
Here's what we could do. We can, if, if you aren't signed up, we can ask if anyone's still.
I just want to make sure.
Against and you have a chance.
Yeah, i- if we don't call, uh, if we don't call your name, we can always add you, uh, before we. But, but all people who we, we were here last time that didn't come today, they're not being counted then? Uh, well, we have people, i- if they signed in, in support or opposition or for information we would have at least been here. Uh, there was another, um, uh, rezoning application, uh, so I don't know if they were signed differently. I don't know. I just want to make sure that the people who signed, that you have your opposition list.
Yes, to answer your question, yes, you are counted. To answer your question. But are there people that haven't had a chance to speak in opposition that wish to speak today? That haven't signed in? Or have, where your name hasn't been called?
No.
Okay. So you'll need to sign in, but if you wish to speak, uh, and you haven't yet been called, maybe just please line up because we're running short of time. So if you can maybe line up by the microphone, and you wish to speak, that'd be nice.
Go ahead.
Yeah, can I just clarify? I- if you signed last week and you only signed on the zoning, there's two different forms that, just the way the application.
And when we vote, after the information's come up, we vote, so that.
Oh, I didn't mean right to you. I meant to everyone that was here. If you signed just the zoning one, your name will be kept.
Did you sign the subdivision? If, if you didn't sign the subdivision, you're not being counted.
No, I want to count it.
So you have to sign the subdivision.
Because it's, it's a little bit of a calling that we're being rushed here, because all of us have been here for eight hours, total, over the last two meetings, and we're all getting wet by the end, and that's rushing overboard. We have a right to hear it, right?
No, that's, that's true.
Nor are the people that are for it. Nor are the people that are getting infected.
That's, that's true, but I, I guess what we see, you know, we want to hear everybody what they say, but if someone comes up and says that, you know, there's, they have concerns about infrastructure, it's already been mentioned, we have that down written already. And, and all what we got to do is just acknowledge it, that those are the points that you're opposed to, I suppose to, because, uh, we are getting close to where we are, where last week, the last time is that we're, we have to end this meeting at 10, otherwise we have to end for an extension. And then if we don't finish it today, that means we have to come back for another time. So we sooner like, make sure that everybody is heard. So we just ask that you keep it as brief as possible.
No, but, but I, can, can it be put down or put on record?
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
You'll get to sign in. Just line up, it'll just help us move things faster.
Yep, so is there any more people that want to speak?
In opposition.
In opposition? Just you two? You go, you can, you just stand up. Yes, yep.
Now, my name's Brad Cooper. I'm in 75, Mariners Trail. So I wasn't going to stand up and speak, but I have, because I've been here eight hours, total, um, here about my development of the, my West St. Paul. And I have a bunch of people telling me how I should accept what West St. Paul is. West St. Paul is, and New York art dealer, they have a bunch of people telling me how nice it should be in there. That's great, we're art in there, but it's our West St. Paul. If you ask anybody here what they want, they want what our West St. If you ask anybody here what they want, they want what our West St. Paul is. And it just seems like it's getting put to the waste sign, what West St. Paul is. I just, I find, I'm getting, I'm a little emotional, I wasn't going to stand up, but I am, because our art week isn't about New York. In size of lot we are, and people say, oh, it'd be nice to have a small. You know, we have no time to do this, I'm a busy person, I have time. I take, I know where we are and all our neighbors, and I'm not opposed to a development. But I always assumed our development is weirder than it is. Because I've been in West St. Paul with my wife since we were here, my in-laws lived here, we worked here. I know what West St. Paul is, so I just want people to see what the residents are saying, more than a bunch of other people potentially wanting to come into. We, there's reason why we want to go there. I don't want to be, I don't want to be here anymore. That doesn't matter.
Thank you very much for your, next.
Eric Hill, one eleven, Mariner's Trail. Just wanted to quickly say a couple things. I went to a college staff, and actually met with her, and addressed, and then asked her to come back to the night. I appreciate it very much, I actually come back to Karen Tate at MIT and spoke to her, and I think she's sure that there was connection to the development, so I appreciate that direction. We did have a big discussion over development, I mean likewise, but I will still oppose based on those lots that are not matching ours. And a couple things, again, just to reiterate what you said by the gentleman gentleman there. I'm tired of hearing what people say, if you want a lot, go live in one of them, don't just look for a cheaper lot. Over there, if you want a small lot, we came up here for a big lot. I know the zoning thing is already, that ship already sailed, and the three councillors that voted again are in favor of it. Wait till comes to your back there, I tell you to leave it. You're not in our form, so listen to the people who are here, because you're not.
Right on.
Hello, this is Claudia, and I'm resident of River's Edge, eighteen, Mariner's Trail. And I agree with my fellow neighbors with concerns, and I oppose this.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry Valinke, three five four, right with you, right, West St. Paul. First of all, I'd like to make very clear, the plan is nice, but it means nothing, it's a constant. What's here is twenty-one blocks, blank. That's what we're talking about, not this up there, the sixty-foot lots, seventy-foot lots, whatever. It's the twenty-one blocks which are blank, that's what we decided. I have a couple of questions. What's easement between the houses on this block in this district?
I think this is just a comment period, we can, this is just a comment period, we can answer your questions afterwards.
I can ask a question?
You can ask a question in the presentation.
Okay, sorry, you can ask a question in the presentation, but we won't, we may not answer it. We're just listening.
A decision if you don't have the answers. I mean, you know, we're in this country. It's a monthly theory, let's think of, please. What's the capacity of the sewer of West St. Paul? We need to go back, but it's a capacity, it's a set, set. We need to go back, because there's a lot of proposed sewers for other areas in West St. Paul. That being delayed, delayed, delayed for new development, but it only has a capacity. So how can we go have that capacity? Better for them to have this capacity. This road going to River's Trail, or River's Fair, I'm not sure. The way to solve this is in the development agreement, on dedication, we should have a bridge strip there. Bridge strip would prevent them at any other time changing this to open it up to road. The bridge strip should be built by the construction. So I think that at least to calm the people down on that road. Because everything can be applied for, I mean, you have zoning, and then you can apply, you can always apply and change this. So what they're saying here is bad intentions, super force. But what we're really talking about is this point. I still never have an answer for easement. I'd like to know easement, and I'd like to know if we can have multiple housing, if we can have community there, if we can have high rises there, because I don't know. I mean, they're showing, they're showing this development, everybody likes, but that's not what we're deciding. We're deciding twenty-one blocks. I have a question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I ask a question here? Are you asking about easement or asking about width between houses?
Between houses, yes.
Okay, it's a difference between easement and width.
Because I, if you speak three feet, I don't know where. I'm not, I'm a lot.
And the planners just said that it's five.
Five now.
It's never been.
Must be.
Yeah, okay, that's all.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition?
I just have one little question of clarification, I presume I have a role exposure on River's St. Can I ask?
Make it quick.
The question, okay, Stefan from Ask Me, he's on the Mariner's Trail. The question that I have from Mariner's Trail, as we go into the new development, the River Road, that was kind of a question whether it's going to close or open. How are you going to monitor that, and how is that going to be controlled? Because you say that in the new development, it's supposed to have two accesses, so one is having to mention, and then using hours into the river connection. Or possibly whatever, going up north, going up north to work, and to have pushes? There is no connection to the moose, so how are you going to get it out? So can you clarify, do I have that?
Well, we've got you, we know what your question is.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in opposition?
David from submitted one oh three, Mariner's Trail, I just want to be on the record as opposition, please. And for the same reasons that everybody else is saying.
Cheryl Wolfers, thirty-five, Mariner's Trail, I'm just, I'm sure I'm on there, because apparently last week we used to put a cutout of the path here, and we like. Do you keep pointing back to my backup, I was very down, because we didn't get to sign again, because they were told not to sign with me, and now we're pointing on it off course.
Sorry, it was Cheryl?
Cheryl Walker, yes.
Cheryl, are you on there? You're on there, we had you listed as for information, so I'll change that for you.
I'll check that.
Can I make sure my name's on there, it's Bob Carroll-Jensen, one zero six, Mariner's Trail.
We had you registered for information.
Opposition, I changed that when I was there last time.
Sorry, the address I have?
Do I have a more prepared?
You, we had you registered for information, I'll change back to opposition.
Can I just have a question, because I was there last week at the end, and I saw numerous of people come up specifically to you and say, I no longer ask for information, I am old. What does that mean? That was a lady, and now I'm a little sorry, and they don't want to hear it. So what happened? That's what happened.
If there was any mistakes in the names that were called in your position, definitely let us know immediately. Everyone who's registered in favor, in opposition, or for information, it'll be listed in our minutes.
And we come back to the office and make sure it's checked off, or what do you use?
We should tell everybody to check the minutes.
Should we be getting why, is it the email ones or the ones on the opposition?
No.
Yes, there's a number of people that have registered by my email or by letter in opposition.
I would just say, Cam, that I think that people have changed their vote for the zoning. And that, maybe they didn't sign in for the subdivision today?
It could have been, they kind of caused confusion.
So maybe you can ask them if they haven't signed in today for the subdivision, that they should come, they should do that, so. I don't know if they can, they could do that, right?
Right.
Just for our audience, there were forty-eight letters that were submitted to council earlier in opposition. The comments listed there were that some wanted to see the value, say about the value of homes in new development as goes in River's Edge. There was concern River's Edge property values will decline. Comments received for that, there's too many homes and expansion in the area already. Don't want to see any smaller lots, lots should be seventy-five feet wide. There were concerns raised that additional traffic won't go through River's Edge. People didn't want current roadways used to access the subdivision. Proposed drive through River's Edge to access the development is dangerous and poor design. Connecting to River's Edge will cause safety issues for children, pets, and people who walk in the area. There's no sidewalks in River's Edge which make extra traffic more of a safety concern. Concern about construction traffic and damage if you cause to infrastructure and private property. Comments received for that, the new development will increase crime. Safety concern about accessing number nine from River's Edge without traffic lights at intersection. People commented that they wanted less density. Also that it wasn't clear how the developer will access and provide water and sewer. If water taken from the ground, this will negatively impact the aquifier. And lastly, concerned about non-residents being able to voice views on the proposed development. In addition, we also received a few additional letters in opposition. One was from Richard Pecorni, also from Brian Markowitz, Carol and Steve Kornacki, Kornicki, and Dallas Deenakon.
Is that it?
That's, that's it for opposition.
Is there any for information?
We do have a number registered for information, we have Caitlin Belange.
Caitlin?
Also Jason Allen. Montier Shahal, Jaswant Sindhu. Heinz Cheryl, or Cheryl. Ron Reese.
I was opposed.
We'll change that to oppose. Lynn Alarcan, as well as Lou Alarcan. Johannes Aladasi. Bert Paul Daliwal. Brandon Powell. And also Roma Thorlsson.
Yeah, I hope the gentleman would answer the question, but I didn't hear a clear answer, it's about the access, so I became alerted to this.
Did you want to?
Roma Thorlsson, one seventeen, River's Edge, Denver. So I became alerted to this development and the concern about the access road to my neighbors, I didn't hear, I got a sheet yesterday of telling me about this meeting, but that was only just yesterday. So I just, I just wanted to clarify, I heard that the access road from the new development to River's Edge mistakes would be, would be an emergency road holding. So I heard that, but then earlier I heard that that was not a possibility. So I'm still not clear about what the possibility is of that road, so that's what I heard. Like, can that road, like, can it be designated only as emergency, or is that not an option? This earlier in the meeting, I thought that that is not an option.
Can I, can I get the planner to answer?
Sure. So in all new subdivisions, you need a way in and a way out, so you need two points of access into a subdivision. The applicant is proposing that the access to the existing neighborhood, that proposed roadway just before pathway or there's a use only, something like that. There also seems to be proposals from them to have an access for a roadway going north at some time in the future, that could also be a second one. Ultimately, I guess I could say it gets up to council to decide what they want to see there. So there are guidelines and rules about how to design a subdivision, but it falls on our council to ultimately decide what will take place.
Okay, but is that actually uncertainty of that development that I've heard filmmakers express as well? So if there was more guarantee that, okay, this access road will be only for that, you know, I think that we'd have more assurance. But it just sounds like what the rest of them were saying, what many of them were saying, is that there is, it's a proposal, you know, there's a lack of trust. I guess that's fundamental here, is we're not sure we can trust that decisions will be made in their risk.
I guess the issue to add to that is that the roadways are part of this application, so if the council decides that this will be approved, that's one of the things that they'll also decide to make. They want it just to be an AT connection or adversity connection, they can add that as one of the conditions of their approvals. So if it's approved tonight, you'll hear one way or another from council.
Excuse me, ma'am?
We're just, we're just going to extend the meeting, because we're at a curfew, so if we can just extend the meeting.
We're going to hold to extend. Okay.
So we got to close the public.
Can't close the public hearing, because applicant hasn't done their bottom. So we're going to extend the meeting, is that correct?
But we have to close the meeting to extend, to open the council.
But we have to close the meeting to extend, to open the council meeting, to extend the meeting.
Council, council has the vote if they want to extend.
Yeah, but we don't have to close the public hearing.
Yeah.
You can adjourn the meeting. Extend the meeting.
Okay, so can we adjourn and extend it?
I'll just adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Just so you know, if you want to adjourn the public hearing for subdivision.
And then to extend the meeting.
Vote to extend.
That's two resolutions.
Yeah.
Two voters.
Did you want to read it?
Maybe just, just to show explain what we're doing.
All right, so there's a resolution to adjourn the public hearing. Then we'll have a resolution to extend the meeting to ten thirty. Then we'll have a resolution to reconvene the public hearing, okay? Be it resolved that the public hearing for subdivision S twenty-two dash two-nine-six-five be adjourned.
So moved.
So moved. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Consul Bishubi seconds it. Any comments? Can I call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the meeting be extended to ten thirty P. M.
Consul Pakkan moves the motion. Consul Khyber seconds it. Any comments? Can I call for the question?
It's still not going to, you know, my comment is it's still not going to end tonight, so.
That's my comment also. I don't know why we're not just picking a date. It's never going to, we still have rebuttal from the developer.
It's talking to end by ten thirty.
And we still have all council members' questions to it. And we still have more people speaking, and I feel like we're rushing them.
Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie?
And then you're going to read, to reconvene. I'm going to read it just the same as to open it, just like this, except you're going to say that, yeah.
Be it resolved that this meeting of council reconvenes for the purpose of holding the public hearing pursuant to section one twenty-five-two of the planning act.
So moved.
Consul Pakkan moves. Consul Khyber seconds. All, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Carrie? Go ahead. Can you speak? Lotta, please.
Just a couple of observations. One, just finding interesting that there are two lots I've heard that are going forward already, but will be a larger lots. And yet we don't want to make the whole lots larger. Second, if people probably go to one or two acre lots, River's Edge, the lots in there are not one or two acres. They're lots in the middle now. So when people who are, the reason people who go to the country is to have lots that are a little bigger, they're not one or two acres. They only take an hour to have. So that's too much for you. We don't want to be concerned with that. Third thing is, the longer I hear about this, this access, where people to the developments come out, the longer is it actually going to happen? Because it sounds like the recommendations for a subdivision requirement is to have that open. And yet we keep saying it's up to council. Well, first of all, council, some of the council doesn't seem to be hearing that River's Edge man or asking. And second of all, how likely is council to vote against subdivision recommendations? Well, I don't know. We talked about this more open in the future. Well, when's in the future? So over the next five, ten years, we're going to live with that one? Because you guys aren't going to vote no to keep it closed if that's not what the recommendations are for developing subdivision, right? I don't know if that's the answer to that.
We made note of your comments. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
That's everyone who's registered unless anyone else would like to speak.
Anyone else like to speak?
There was a couple of questions about, if we're talking about on our side, concerning priorities, if we're really looking at this development. Are we still living, like the thought of living vocals on that side and keeping some of the same old R, they don't want to do two story posts on that side. You know, they vocals may always be there and making sure those lots are the same size and everyone making a R, they also, they all look the same type and basically, they practice back to the road. And also two street size, nobody thought to that. Are they even the same size streets in our streets? Or you guys make it small or bigger? Like, because that's a concern, right? Because, you know, like, are we going to, I see how the smoke is done down. I mean, you guys are small, we always do a lot with some of the other folks. They can't get there. Just my questions are, like, streets, what are we doing for our side? Because I do not want to be looking at these two stories of being to my, to my background. And that's my thought, because I live there in our basement of my house already, and I don't, I don't, it's always been here. So I love that meeting as a house here. What I want to be looking at, I don't want to get stuck with it. Whatever you put for your lots, they get it. And yes, somebody did mention before they left, you think that they already had a lot of locusts in there, home builders, they're going to take one of those lots, the urban lots. I was wrong with that. I don't have anything that's on again. So now they're already giving lots away to other people, which your belongs are mine. Let's make sure you, I think that's what people, actually, we're here already. Because I'm, this is, this is not a task. Not another moving.
Thank you. Okay, so now, I guess, can I have that, can you speak, come up for rebuttal? Oh, just wait. Can we take a two-minute recess first? Just a bathroom break? Yes, bathroom break? Anyone want to go for bathroom break?
Two minutes.
Okay, good.
I think we're going to listen to everyone I've taken. Here's a bunch of notes to try and capture what's been said, but to try and give some clarity on items that were confusing to people. And then try and go in order of what's I've taken here. In regards to the active transportation trail, we are providing active transportation trail along Main Street where it is existing and connected to, but it has that continuation of use. Active transportation trails are through right-of-way everywhere in the province, both rural and suburban. So it is like a very significant active transportation trail that the RM is allowing. For, sorry, my name is terrible. With the concern on the growth rate of the RM, that is, that is difficult to determine with secondary plan process as well. And these lands have designated for residential development. And the amount that is approved with individual lots at later date, again, we're looking asking for the subdivision into blocks that we're looking at. Also, you can establish the form of the developers, not the individual lots. The amount that gets approved by the RM over time will be the growth rate for this area as we go through. So there is still checks and balances that can be provided by this council, as we've covered on the number of lots that get approved on each application that we're pulling. It is twenty-one blocks to throw in, so that we do have that certainty of where we are for the rest of our lots. We are looking towards a specific form that we're looking at in this development, and that's where the lots with the PR set out, so that it doesn't get produced in any way or change. So we have that set up, meaning where the vision is for the common spaces and the roads themselves. The road limits, the ready limits are as per the requirements by the RM, so we will keep those requirements. It is standard that is provided to us, both for the typical residential lots, as well as the wider divided entry out to the highway. All of these here. For the access points, as was done for River's Edge immediately to the south, a divided entrance was provided up onto the highway, and a road access was provided north into R Development, which was into an AT. That was a right-of-way that was there, is considered for their access points. That road is the one that we're looking at for the right-of-way that would be not developed as a road. So it's the same situation with the connection to the north, where we're developing a road right-of-way to a future connection to the north, as our second point is about the exact same situation, the exact same people that would be from that. We do have the divided entry, so we do have two points of access coming out onto that highway at all times. In the question about wells for RC versus a service lot, the costs for bringing servicing for the number of lots that would be developed for RC, for what would have been RC, would not have been stable, so it would have been wells to pay the financial work. Whereas with RC, with sixty-foot lots, this long coverage, that serviceability becomes much more physical for the development for the year begins. In regards to the archaeology, once again, we will be following the recommendations of the archaeologists on the mitigation of the site and what the requirements are. To our knowledge, this site has not been designated as historically significant as a family point. There are hundred artifacts in the ground that were closer to the river, but the number of them, we understand that, and we are going to be working with the archaeologists throughout There's a lot of same comments coming through in regards to ensuring, to understanding the, that we are coming back in the future for the lot development. Do you want to have the lots right now? Providing those lots in the future allows us to make sure that it meets the requirements as we're looking for. So on the land, that's sixty-foot lots for the center, sixty-foot lots with a range from sixty to sixty-nine, in that color. So maybe going back to what we want to have in these areas gives us a bit of time with each phase as we come forward with the body. And we won't be able to sell the lots until such time as we come forward with the development and active development agreement and all of the servicing things. Heights of the homes, I'm quick to, well, are you showing that you're allowed to have a two-story by, by the dialogue in RC for the height of the home, as is everybody else in RC allowed to have a two-story home? That would be what we'll be looking at for areas. There will be some that will be two-story.
Quiet, please.
For consideration of having the strip at the right-of-way that would be owned by the RM, right-of-way is already owned by the RM, so having that strip would be something that would be put in as a PR strip. Again, that would be up to council whether or not they would want to see that, if they would close them off that road, particularly. We would be, we would have to have, we would have to have, because the access strip, we would have to have conversations with administration to confirm that for the, um, sorry, I mentioned To be clear, there are lots have been assigned to anyone, there are lots have been sold to anyone. There are no lots to sell. There are people who wish to have lots, and they have their eye on lots, they do not have them sold. So. Does anybody else have a question?
Council, any questions? Consul Pakkan?
There were some comments about multifamily in the development. Can you provide some comfort for people that brought that up? Is there a likelihood of multifamily going into this development? I know you've stated for its single-family development, but the question was brought up, so I'd like to hear your comment on it.
We just have a rezoning to everything being RC, so there is no multifamily permitted in an RC zoning. As we discussed previously, there is the portions that are in our corner that they ever in the future, the RM wants to have seniors bungalow housing. There's potential there, but that's, all of that's the only reason that a road is not going to run in. Duplexes in the area are considered multifamily, so they are not permitted. No park facilities are permitted in this area.
Any more questions from council? Be it resolved that council does hereby close the public hearing and resume the regular meeting of council. Can I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Consul Bishubi moves.
I'll second it.
Also Pakkan seconds. Any comments, questions? Can I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None carried. Okay, so now, be it resolved that council of the name is Paul on the sections one twenty-five of the Plan Act approved the subdivision application of undressed properties located on Main Street identified as rolls two-two-nine-zero-two-two, two-two-nine-three-zero-zero, and two-two-nine-three-five-oh, in order to subdivide the subject lines into twenty-one blocks ranging from point four-three acres to fifteen point four-three acres, subject to the following conditions? Do I have to read the whole conditions? Applicant owners submit confirmation in writing from the chief administrative officer of the municipality that the taxes on the land be subdivided for the current year, plus any arrears have been paid or arrangements satisfied. The council has been made. The existing undeveloped road right-of-way is located in the planned area to receive all required approvals from municipal council and the province of Manitoba be closed and sold in order to incorporate into the development. C, application owner enter into development agreement to address the following, but not limited to, approximate servicing design and installation, transportation, network requirements, recreation amenities, design standards, landscape buffing, drainage, and flood protection. If required information or further subdivision approvals are not completed at the time of drafting, then these matters would be addressed in the future servicing agreement as outlined in the development agreement. Public reserve land to be dedicated to the municipality at no cost. E, that the parcel land with the roll two-two-eight-seven-nine-five be incorporated into the River Edge Drive right-of-way. Two, applicant owners submit written confirmation to the RRPD from Manitoba Hydro that the easement agreements have been entered into with Manitoba Hydro. easement agreements have been entered into with Manitoba Hydro and Center Gas with respect to existing and future facilities associated with the subdivision and the plan of easement as required by the Real Property Act has been provided. Registration of this agreement will be included as a condition of final certificate of approval. Contact Manitoba Hydro at, uh, hcsc@hydro.mv.ca. One, two, uh, 12-320 Portage Avenue, Winnipeg, Manitoba, R3COG8. Applicant owners submit written confirmation to the RRPD from Bell MTS that an easement agreement has been entered into with respect to existing and to future telecommunications associated with the subdivision. Contact Grace Bushy at 22, uh, 204-958-1959 or E, Grace?
You don't have to go through those.
No?
Does he, does he have to read all of that?
Uh, not, not the more than...
Okay, okay. Applicant owners, thank you. Applicant owners submit confirmation from drainage and water rights licensing branch in Manitoba, conversation, con, con, conservation and climate that applicant has satisfied all requirements from that agency as detailed in their correspondence from July 14, 2022. This includes if required approval of engineering drainage plan, approval of hydraulic design calculations, and obtaining a white, a water rights license. Uh, five applicants to, owner to, to dedicate a 30-meter-wide riparian area along the Red River measured inland from the ordinary, ordinary high watermark, restricting development to be addressed within the development agreement with the RM of Western Paul in order to help protect or reestablish functioning riparian areas where there have been altered to help stabilize banks, provide aquarter, wildlife habitat, and protect water quality. Six applicant owner provides a written confirmation that sufficient information has been provided to Mandip, see, um, uh, nine, how do you say that name? Nan Tim's TV?
Do you want to read that?
Oh. To allow him to determine if drainage from his site may adversely affect the coverage of right-of-way system. If necessary, our regional office may request applicant to submit a detailed drainage plan prepared by qualified experts. Please note that the cost of this study and how there are revisions of the high-risk drainage system directly associated with this proposed development will be the responsibility of the developer. Seven, developer provides written confirmation from the apartment, the, from the department that we have received and approved the traffic impact study for this development. The traffic impact study will have to be prepared by a qualified transportation engineer. It will identify the amount and type of traffic that has been generated by the development and its potential impact on the adjacent road network. This study will identify the type of on-highway improvements that will be required to seek to accommodate the traffic generated by this development. The cost of the traffic impact study and any required on-highway improvements would be the responsibility of the developer. Uh, the con, the applicant will have to enter into an agreement with the department for the construction of the on-highway improvements. The owner obtain a permit from Manitoba Transportation Infrastructure for the removal of the existing access point to Highway Number Nine immediately north of the proposed public road connection, into the proposed public road connection onto Provincial Highway Nine. Um, number nine, applicant owners submit confirmation from Manitoba Transportation Infrastructure that the applicant has satisfied all requirements from that agency as detailed in the correspondence from July 21, 2022, which pertains to connectivity, conductivity, conformity of plans, of functional plans of the area, and verification of new public roads located, location alignments. The property is rezoned to RC Comprehensive Residential Zone as proposed in BL 2022-09P. Applicants owners submit written confirmation to the RRPD from Shaw Communication that an easement agreement has been entered into with respect to existing and to further facility association with the subdivision, with the subdivision. Registration of this agreement will be included as a condition of final certificate of approval. Twelve applicants provide confirmation to the RRPD for Manitoba Archaeological Assessment Service Unit that the Heritage Resource Impact Assessment has been conducted as detailed in the correspondence from the agency dated July 7, 2022. Okay, any comments? Go ahead.
Can we, I'd like to make a motion that we add a couple of conditions to this.
Okay.
Um, the connection point at Rivers Edge Drive be kept closed as a wa, oh, sorry. Sorry. I'd like to, I'd like to add a couple of conditions to this, um, that the connection to Rivers Edge Drive be kept closed with emergency, only for walking, and that emergency bollards be added, that if the fire department or any other emergency services need to access, that, that would be the only access for it, no motorized vehicles. And one other condition that I'd like to see added, that there is no start to any of this until there is a service agreement before the water has sore, to the satisfaction of our municipal engineers, that it would be arranged.
One other thing I'd like to see added, and I'm not sure if this is the proper time or not, but, uh, for phase, you know, if there was any phasing, I would want to see the, uh, playground and, and any of that stuff in the first phase of development and not, uh, later on phasing.
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear you, Councilor Campbell. You said something about playgrounds?
Yeah, the, the playground, uh, if there's, there is a playground in it, I'd want it, wanna see it in the first phase if there was phasing.
Okay.
Uh, you know, they haven't proposed that, it's, I just, I, you know, other developments, I've seen them say they'll do it in the second phase and then it never happens, right? So I'd rather, I, I would want that written in there, that it would be first phase if they were doing any phasing at all.
Thank you.
I had any? Kate, can we, uh, now we'll call for the vote?
We have to ask if you want the council, if we want to add those conditions.
Does the council want to add those conditions? All in favor?
No, you don't have to call them.
Okay.
We have a second.
Okay.
For the additional conditions?
You need to move it to the resolution.
Right. Oh, you need to move it, but are, have we added those conditions?
First, we need a mover and a seconder.
Oh, first we need a mover and a seconder, oh.
Kate, could I have a mover for the, uh, Councilor Chevy? Councilor Campbell seconds it. Any discussions?
I wanna add those, I'd like to see those, uh, conditions, uh... I'd like to see those conditions added to, that we just spoke about to the resolution.
Any, any comments, questions? All in favor?
You're not, you're not voting for that, you just ask if there's any opposition to the kind of conditions.
Well, we were the mover and the seconders and we both put the conditions out, so I guess we're good with it.
I'm sorry, I don't get it.
Well, you need the mover and the seconder if there's gonna be changes.
The conditions, right?
To change conditions, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So...
So is that what we're voting on?
Yeah, call for a mover.
Is there a motion?
Okay.
You ready to call the?
On the whole thing, right?
On the whole thing, we got it.
Okay, so are we agreed to add those conditions?
Yep, I wanna see them added.
You, you know, Chair, have we added those conditions?
Do you want me to speak to it? So, um, Mr. Mayor, you've, uh, you've put a, um, a mover and a seconder on the floor for the resolution.
Right.
And if you want to add those three, three extra conditions, those who moved it and seconded it have to be okay with that, so the question would be to Counselor Campbell and Counselor Bushetti, are you okay with those, those being added to the resolution that you moved and seconded?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, yep.
I'm good with that.
So now they're added?
Good, thank you.
And they can continue on with your discussion or if you wanna call for a question or vote, that's, uh, that's what I want.
Any discussions?
I'm just noticing the time.
10:20.
Can we, uh, call?
If you wanna speak to it, then we have no time.
Call for a question now?
You wanna rush it?
Call for the question?
Is it, anybody wanna discuss?
Yeah, is that, uh... Want to discuss, and got any discussions?
Nope.
Nope.
I have no discussion.
Kate, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I have stand for the vote.
Carrie. For the third, for the third reading, we can move that.
That's it.
There's a little third reading until, uh, until, uh...
Kate? We can close, close the meeting.
Kate?
Close the meeting.
Table the meeting? Zoe's? Oh.
Kate?
You heard her?
Yeah, table me, okay.
Table the balance of the remainder to the future meeting, because there's no public here.
Yeah, I, I... Kate, I table the rest of the agenda to the 26th.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All in favor, aye. All opposed? Carrie.
Hi, Dan, Giorgio.
Yeah, me. Mover and a seconder to a jury?
Sure. We, I call the meeting, let's, let's, let's get that here.
Mover and a seconder to a juror, me and Peter.
Move it in, definitely.
I did.
I did, and neither one of us.
Yep. Meeting is all in favor, um...
Aye.